Thank you, everyone. Sorry that we are ten minutes late. Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you all to the board meeting tonight. To access translation, please click on the globe icon below or at Dejean. You can go to the corner of the room to get materials. We are returning from closed session. After opening procedures, the public will have the opportunity to make public comment. The board has changed the public comment format. We have opportunities on non-agenda items in person through the Zoom app and by telephone at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment will last one hour. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. If you are attending the meeting in person, you will need to submit a request to address the board form to indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item. After it's been turned in, the staff will place the item in order of when they are turned in. We call on speakers one at a time, alternating between public comment at Dejean and one on Zoom. If participating via Zoom, you need to raise your hand by clicking the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine if accessing the meeting by phone. No yielding of time or substitution of speakers permitted. The public will also have an opportunity to make public comment on agenda items after staff presentation for the discussion and action items. The public will have 10 minutes per item and one minute per speaker. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Now let's move to our open procedures. First, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, if you are willing and able, please rise.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst. We are now moving to the land acknowledgement. Dr. Hurst, do we have that video ready?
We do have the video today, and we'll have Rose bring it up.
Thank you. That was Pinot Valley High School. We're now moving to Agenda Item B3, the Labor and Body Recognition. I acknowledge that the burden of environmental exploitation and systemic injustice falls upon the labor of Black and Brown bodies in the building of this country and its institutions. I remember that Black and Brown people were born and died working this land against their will for generations. Also acknowledge the continued contribution of the labor of survivors over the centuries to today. All immigrant labor, including voluntary and voluntary trafficked, forced, and undocumented peoples in the building of what we refer to as the United States. We are now moving to Agenda Item B4, the West Contra Costa Unified School District's School Board Anti-Racist Statement. The West Contra Costa School District Board of Education is committed to the work of anti-racism, the conscious and active efforts to identify, challenge, and correct racial inequities in systems and institutions within our schools and community. Racism, explicit or implicit, stands in direct conflict to the fundamental principles of WCCUSD education. To carry WCCUSD education into the future, we recognize that we must continually renew and reflect on the roots of racism and develop new ideas to meet the times. Unjust ideas and policies and the racial inequity that they produce have shaped us, our schools, and our society. We strive to uncover unconscious biases and practice anti-racism as individuals and as board members. We challenge ourselves to persist through the discomfort necessary for growth and learning, to deepen our listening and our examination of racism and oppression, and to develop a strong understanding of how our personal experiences and feelings fit into a larger picture of continual oppression. Each member of our school board individually and collectively is responsible for creating and nurturing an anti-racist learning environment where each student, staff member, and community partner is respected and valued member of WCCUSD community. We are uniquely positioned, and it is our responsibility to identify and dismantle racist ideas and equitable policies in ourselves and across the district. Therefore, we commit to supporting anti-racist policies, programs, and practices for our children's education and well-being while building strong and inclusive school communities. We commit to holding each board member accountable towards these goals and moving the work of anti-racism forward. We also commit to holding West Contra Costa Unified School District staff, students, and community to live in these standards of anti-racism in our schools. Dr. Hurst, could you please do roll call?
Absolutely. President Smith Folds.
Good evening, everyone present.
Trusty Clerk Gonzalez Hoi, absent. Trusty Reckler.
Good evening, present.
Trusty Christian.
Good evening, present.
Trusty Phillips, absent. Student Trusty Palcar.
Good evening, present.
Student Trusty Abdou Karpov.
Good evening, present.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much. We are now moving to Agenda Item B6, Report and Ratification of Closed Session. Dr. Hurst, you have anything to report out, sir?
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Regarding Item A21, the board voted to approve the appointment of Shirley Priestley as Coordinator of Special Education Cameron. The vote was as follows: Trusty Christian, yes. Trusty Reckler, yes. President Smith Folds, yes. With Trusty Gonzalez Hoi absent and Trusty Phillips absent. The board voted to approve the appointment of Deshaun Givens as interim executive director of elementary. The vote was as follows: Trusty Christian, yes. Trusty Reckler, yes. President Smith Folds, yes. And with Trusty Gonzalez Hoi absent and Trusty Phillips absent. And the board voted to approve the appointment of Jawan Eldridge as interim executive director of secondary. The vote was as follows: Trusty Christian, yes. Trusty Reckler, yes. President Smith Folds, yes. With Trusty Gonzalez Hoi absent and Trusty Phillips absent. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are now moving to Agenda Item B7, Request to Address the Board is Go Public Schools.
And I think we have a slide as well. There we go. All right. Good evening. My name is Molly Maloney from Go Public Schools. I'm a Richmond resident and a parent here in the district, but I'm here tonight representing West Contra Costa parent Rochelle Morrissey, who's not able to attend tonight due to summer vacation conflicts. I stand before you tonight as a member of Go Public Schools Community Led Committee on Literacy. We represent a collective of West Contra Costa community members united by our shared conviction that literacy instruction and outcomes in our district can and must improve. Our sense of urgency stems from the alarming data showing that only one in three students in our district are on grade level for English Language Arts. Additionally, the personal outcomes and educational experiences of our own children bring us here as we fear they are not being given the opportunities to meet their full literacy potential. The committee started its work earlier this school year, engaging in a learning journey. We attended webinars, read articles, attended conferences, all in an effort to better understand best practices in literacy instruction. We studied the California ELA-ELD framework and what the scientific research says our children need and deserve, and we noticed how this often did not match the classroom realities experienced by our children and WCCUSD. We believe that reading, writing, and literacy can be powerful, joyful experiences. To have the best chances in life, it is crucial that our students develop strong literacy skills. Unfortunately, there does not yet seem to be a clear aligned vision for literacy in this district. In all the conversations around strategic plans, budget cuts, and the challenges we face, rarely do we hear anything about instruction, about literacy, or what action will improve our students' outcomes. So we come here tonight with a literacy call to action to address what can and must become true in our district so that all of our children can develop as strong, confident readers, writers, and speakers. And I'll hand it off.
Good evening. My name is Katie Vazquez, and for me, education and literacy are very important because it's through our literacy that we teach our kids how to read and write and speak. My journey, my son's journey has been special frustrating for me because my son is struggling to read for six consecutive years until we was diagnosed with dyslexia in the fifth grade. It was only then that I was understanding why it had been difficult for him to learn how to read. Imagine what it was like for my son if he is too struggling at school and I don't know what to support that he needs. As part, I am very much involved in my children's education. I'm part of the leader in ELAC and the SEC as well as literacy because for me, my children's education is matter to me in spite of working long days and having physical limitations and may time to be present because I want to know how to, I can help my son make progress and feel confident at the school. Imagine for a parents who is unable to participate in the children's education and help them at home. Imagine what it will be for like for a parent to missing understanding the children's challenge and what I will take for them to successful because they are know how to help them. I can tell you from firsthand experience that is frustrating and heartbreaking. Our parents and guardians who want to support the children deserve the right to advocate for the children's and children's in the district that all children's can be successful. Please, you receive our latest call for action to support an effort to improve students' coming. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Brielle Palmerance. I work for Go Public Schools, and I'm an El Cerrito resident. I had the privilege of supporting the Literacy CLC this year. We bring to you tonight our literacy call to action for West Contra Costa, but we do not stand here alone. We are joined by the hundreds of families, educators, and community partners who have joined us at learning sessions and committee meetings throughout the year. We are also joined by the Black Parent Resource Center, the Council of Elders, Fierce Advocates, and Healthy Contra Costa, whose names are on our coalition letter we present this evening. This call to action is driven by our unwavering belief that all of our students have a fundamental right to be taught to read, write, and think critically. If we are truly serious about equity in our district, we must be serious about ensuring equitable access to high-quality literacy instruction and producing equitable literacy outcomes for all. Strong literacy skills are necessary for young people to become literate and effective communicators, self-reliant, data-driven decision-makers, and effective empathetic civic leaders, which are the pillars of West Contra Costa Unified School District's new graduate profile. This call to action is grounded in the vast research on learning and how children develop reading and literacy. This research finds that unlike speaking, reading is not a natural process and must be taught in a systematic and explicit approach that addresses the needs of each student. However, literacy not only requires foundational reading skills but must also be fostered by instruction on all five strands of California's ELA-ELD framework: content knowledge, meaning-making, effective expression, and language development, in addition to those foundational skills. This call to action is intended to serve as a baseline guide to what at minimum every student should be able to experience in their classroom as they build their literacy skills and what every student and teacher deserves to have access to. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gilberto Cooper, and I am a member of the aforementioned literacy committee. To become confident, skillful, engaged readers and writers, every student has a right to core literacy instruction that is rigorous, joyful, comprehensive, and grounded in five elements. Firstly, systematic, explicit instruction in the foundational skills of reading. This includes phonics, phonological awareness, and fluency. Secondly, knowledge building across a broad range of subjects, from the liberal arts to technical and professional fields. Such knowledge facilitates the student's ability to understand what they are reading, to think critically, and to write knowledgeably. Thirdly, meaning-making, making sense of complex culturally relevant texts. Fourth, growth in the effective expression of ideas. And finally, developing language skills, especially through designated and integrated English language development and through dual-language instruction that supports bilingual C. We are not reinventing the wheel here. In fact, these five elements are straight from California's now 10-year-old ELA-ELD framework. So it is way past time that we ensure that all students receive the literacy instruction already put forward by the state and that this instruction be core and not merely an add-on or intervention. Therefore, we call on you, the board, to hold district leadership accountable for beginning the systemic change that would result in our students receiving the literacy instruction they morally have a right to and that we as adults owe them. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kevin, and I'm a father of a fourth grader at Michelle Obama School, and I'm also an enthusiast in creating an equal environment for education. Our literacy call to action also outlines the resources and practices that every classroom needs at minimum to make strong literacy instruction and outcomes possible. First, every classroom needs to have a credential teacher and a teacher who receives ongoing, evidence-based, paid training and support on how to develop student literacy skills. Every classroom needs to have instructional materials that are aligned with what the scientific research shows are best practices for teaching students how to read and write effectively and that comprehensively teach all core areas of literacy. Our classrooms must be culturally responsive, which includes access to culturally relevant texts and materials that can provide both windows to cultures around the world and mirrors to students' own lived experiences. Our students deserve teachers, administrators, and staff who hold high expectations for students and build on students' assets and strengths, including seeing our students' home language as an asset. Our classrooms should be language-rich environments that foster all students' oral language development, the building of rich academic vocabulary, and the nurturing of critical thinking and expression. Instruction should be data-informed to identify students in need of additional support and inform instructional decisions and actions. Finally, all of this should be in partnership with families, including sharing assessment results, transparency about curricula, and instructional approaches used, and include two-way communication about students' strengths and needs.
Good evening, board. Good evening, superintendent. My name is Mark Harringer. I am the managing director for East Bay for Go Public Schools, and I also have the distinct privilege of being the leader of the CLC. This call to action is not the culmination or end of our work as a community-led committee. Instead, it's the beginning of what we hope is an ongoing partnership, fostering communication, and decisive action to improve literacy practices and outcomes. We present this literacy call to action with the intent it may serve as a valuable tool to guide decision-making around literacy in this district, in classrooms, and across the educational landscape of West Contra Costa Unified School District. As an example, this document can be a self-reflection tool for identifying where our work is hitting the mark and where change and development are needed. It can serve as a guide or a checklist for educators and administrators when setting instructional priorities, creating professional learning opportunities, and making instructional material decisions in the future. This literacy call to action also serves as a call for accountability. It is our responsibility as the public to hold you, our elected board members, accountable for ensuring equitable, strong outcomes for our students, which we do not yet have. And it is your responsibility as the board trustees to hold our district leadership accountable for creating the system and structures that will ensure our students have the outcomes they deserve. We can transform West Contra Costa. It can be a beacon of literacy. We can change ineffective practices, and we can help our students become the brilliant readers, writers, communicators, and leaders that we know they are capable of becoming, but it will take collective action. Together, united in our commitment to literacy, we have the power to ignite profound change and cultivate a future where every student, every student in West Contra Costa County thrives. So let's embark on this journey together, knowing that our dedication today will shape the generations of tomorrow. We will be back next year to follow up on our expectations, accountability, and taking action toward a specific goal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so very much, Go Public. We are now going to Agenda Item. We're going to Agenda Item B8, which is West Contra Costa Unified School District Public Comment. Once again, members of the public are invited to speak to the board about any matter that is not otherized on the agenda and is related to issues affecting public education in West Contra Costa. Public comment will last approximately 60 minutes. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. Individuals wishing to speak must submit a WCCUSD public comment form. Or participating via Zoom, individuals will need to raise their hand in the Zoom app. Raise your hand in the Zoom app. Due to the Brown Act, due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Staff, do we have public comment?
Yes, we do. Our first public comment is Lucas Menenix.
Okay. Good evening, board. My name is Lucas Menenix. I am a parent at Fairmont Elementary. Once again, we are back because there's been truly no effort made to reconcile our 66% site budget cut for next year. I hear an echo. So commitments were made last meeting to work with our principal to figure out how we can meet some of our needs, but no contact was made until literally right before this meeting. Additionally, the district continues to claim, the business office continues to claim that we did not fully utilize our Title I and LCFF funds. So either your accounting system is wrong or our principal is lying to us. I've seen with my own eyes the counselors, the site supervisors, the teachers using intervention hours. So please explain to us how we can be paying for all these folks if we didn't actually use these funds. The lack of partnership throughout this process has been truly astounding. And my request to the board tonight is to hold the district accountable for the commitments that they've made and for their commitment to commitment to equity and ensuring student achievement. If you can't do that tonight, then we're going to have to find a board that can hold the district accountable to their actions. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Jeffrey Sledge. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you so much. I like Lucas, am a Fairmont Elementary parent. Thank you for listening to my comments, and thank you for responding to my emails in the past. I am also here to object to the proposed funding cuts of 66% to our site funds next year. I've shared some of my personal experiences last week, or last meeting, and I just want to say this time, what at stake is also a deeper issue of trust. Trust in the school district and in public schooling as a whole. The reason I'm saying this is I've anecdotally heard of some families now leaving our community because they don't feel like they can trust a school where there is a 66% cut in the budget. And what I feel is that this ends up hurting the underprivileged families even more because there's a loss to the funding, and there's a double-edged loss of loss to community, to PTA, and to fundraising. When I mention these cuts to coworkers and relatives, they just can't believe it. And I just ask you, if your child's school was facing a 66% cut in site funds, would you want to continue to send them there? If you were a teacher, would you want to continue to work there? This really is an existential issue for our school. Please restore our trust in the district and in public schooling. Please convince the district to commit in writing to getting Fairmont Elementary the finances it needs to bridge this devastating gap. Thank you so much.
Our next public comment is Sarah Menenix.
Hi again. As you know, I am also a Fairmont parent, back once again. At the last board meeting, Dr. Moses told the board that Fairmont did not use 60% of its Title I funds last year. Principal Best has confirmed that we did use a majority of our funds. On the school's end, it shows that our BACR site supervisor contract has not yet been processed, as with many of our teacher intervention hours, and she expressed concern that some of our spending has been miscategorized. It seems problematic to base these decisions on the in-progress current year usage that does not fully reflect actual spending. Dr. Moses also made a commitment that she would reach out to Principal Best to find ways to cover some of Fairmont's critical resource needs for this coming year. For us, this includes an additional site supervisor to cover the layout of our campus, online licenses, teacher intervention hours, and counselor hours. Despite multiple emails from the community, there was no follow-through on this commitment until less than 30 minutes before this meeting via a meeting request. I'm asking that the board hold Dr. Moses accountable to following through with this commitment. We understand at this point the district is unwilling to change their Title I designation decisions. I'd like to take this time to argue that there's a large equity flaw in the way the district is currently distributing Title I funds only to schools with those with 50% or more low-income students. Fairmont rests far below the needs of many schools in our district, and I recognize that. But it also has significantly more low-income students than nearly every other school that is not receiving Title I funds. As such, Fairmont will neither have the support of Title I funding nor the parent financial means to make up the difference. I'm asking the business office to commit to looking at a different, more equitable Title I allocation process next year. First, serving the most at-needs schools, those with 75% or more low-income students, and then distributing funds to all the remaining schools on a peer-per-pupil allocation basis.
Our next public comment is Kate Shane. Please unmute yourself.
Excuse me, board. Excuse me. I missed the prompt. This is Andrew Shane. My wife had to step away. He/him pronouns, parent of two students at Fairmont Elementary. We have a wonderful school community, but a large part of that is born out of the response providing the very basics. The parents are involved, they're engaged, those who can are doing what they can. But for example, when we hold fundraisers, the number one feedback we get is that families need free options. There's not a scenario in which these funds, so critically needed, are replaced by any other means. Let's be real, we are already having major behavioral issues unaddressed because of the limited site staff capacity and offloading responsibility to parents, which is unsustainable. One of my children has had ongoing physical and digestive issues and accidents. They know which bathrooms are unsafe. We have kids, you know, who are, yes, eating because of school meals for all, but they're hungry and they're having issues, and there are real problems on the campus that we need these resources for. These funds are for the basics. So much. that we need these resources for. These funds are for the basics, so much of which are already lacking. And on the technical side, it's beyond frustrating to see the misinformation and the mischaracterization of whether Fairmont has unspent funds and the lack of communication. My own email correspondence following up in the prior meetings has yet unaddressed. So our asks are clear: to commit in writing to support Fairmont with the necessary resources and to commit to a different allocation process on a per pupil basis to capture the significant need in our school community. Our children are counting on you.
Our next public comment is Jen Douglas.
Hi, my name is Jen Douglas. This is Julian Douglas. He is now five weeks old. He will be a future Fairmont student. My daughter is a rising first grader at Fairmont. So echoing what you've been hearing a lot tonight and over the past several weeks, we're obviously very concerned as parents about the extreme cuts that are taking place. I do understand why there's motivation to use Title I funds as effectively as possible, and that is part of our concern, that there are going to be over 240 students who are qualifying for these funds, who are the kids that deserve to have access to these funds. But the way that the district is currently allocating these funds is very binary. It's very all or nothing. And so we worry very much about a school like Fairmont being overlooked. While it's already stretched thin, our teachers are already, you know, using their own money, using DonorsChoose, et cetera, to raise money for things like office supplies. And then to lose these funds that will get rid of very critical literature, or literature, sorry, I'm real tired, to get rid of licenses that are very important for literacy, what's, you know, been discussed today, as well as critical resources like counselor hours and extra teacher hours that we're using to make up for some of this achievement gap that Fairmont puts so much effort into closing. And so what we are requesting, oh gosh, 37 seconds, is to have the district commit in writing to helping Fairmont with those resource needs, so aids on the playground to make sure that discipline and sort of order is intact, as well as maintaining the extra hours that our counselors have been putting in using the Title I funds last year. This was said verbally, but we would like this in writing, and we'd like the district to stand behind us in this way, as well as looking at alternative, non-binary ways of distributing this funding, for instance, using it on a per pupil basis as opposed to all or nothing, you're 60% or you're not, and therefore there are no funds for your kids. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Stephanie Cicada. Please unmute yourself.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry. Good evening. My name is Stephanie Cicada. I'm a parent of an EL currently at Obama School, and I'm here tonight to urge you to reject the 2425 LCFF draft. The LCFF requires transparency and ongoing engagement of parent and student into the element of the LCFF. This year, no authentic engagement efforts were made, and the LCFF draft currently available is missing necessary information on spending, program effectiveness, and targeted supports for our English learners and our LTLs. Additionally, the district failed to present the LCFF draft to the DL cap and MDAC for review and comment as legally required to do so. The district is also now required to create new programs to address students who are in the red on the school site level. For example, English learners are in the red for ELA and math, yet none of the actions dedicated to English learners describe the specific strategies to improve the ELA and math rate for English learners. We have continued to raise our concern, yet the district has shown no effort to implement any of our feedback, nor have we seen any amendments to the incomplete LCFF that you are all voting on tonight. When adopting an LCFF report, it is critical that the report is complete, accurate, and reflects the district's best effort to close the equity gaps. This LCFF does not meet any of those requirements. By adopting this incomplete LCFF without proper engagement, you are failing to do your job, and you are failing our students. Please reject the LCFF report and consult with MDAC to implement programs that will be effective for our English learners. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Sarah McIntyre.
Hello, good evening. I am also a parent of a child at Fairmont Elementary School, and I'm here to urge you, like some of the other parents have mentioned, to really put in writing the commitments that were discussed previously to really work with us to help cover these really critical resources, given the $83,000 budget cut. This could be achieved partially by least reinstating the site, the district-wide site fund cut to 16% like the other schools as opposed to the 25%. And, you know, it's ultimately, like others have said, we would really urge you to take a look at how the Title I funds are distributed across schools to really make sure that the students who need them are getting access to them. As folks have mentioned, Fairmont is unique in that it's so large. So while the percentage might not be as high as other schools, there's a large amount of students who have needs there who are really, would lose access to those. So we really are hoping that you can take a look at that and really ensure that Title I funds really are benefiting the students they're meant to benefit and not just a handful of schools that have the most low-income students or students who need access to those funds. As well as if, you know, even if you're not able to distribute those funds this year to Fairmont, considering to reinstate the status that is allowed federally, so at least those matching funds would be available. So the drastic year-over-year cut is not as bad as it currently is supposed to be. We really hope that you'll work with us and really ensure that the school and the children have the resources they need that are really critical. So thank you.
Our next public comment is Maisha Harris Gash. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, all. So one day, I will become an administrator. Professionals who I respect say, you don't want to be one in this district. And my response usually is, why wouldn't I want to be an administrator in the district that raised me? In my 15-plus years here in the district, I've weathered a few storms with that principal and that principal, and the principal who I could have learned the most from, who would have supported me through my admin courses. Well, this district, under a different administration, didn't give her a fair and objective opportunity. The Richmond Unified School District, now WCCUSD, is the backbone to my education. From preschool at the Barrett Apartments to Woods Elementary that is no longer standing, to Lincoln and Washington Elementary's, Downer Junior High School, which is now an elementary, and graduating, y'all know I'm a proud graduate of Kennedy High School. Why wouldn't I want to be an in-person, actual person from Richmond, hey, the city of pride and purpose, who has walked these streets and has achieved a level of success? Why wouldn't I want to share with the coming generations of students that I have traveled around the world, and I'm still traveling, and I choose to return to my roots as a living testimony to the opportunities that await them by taking a step toward what may appear uncomfortable, but yet so rewarding? As my best friend used to say, nothing beats a fail but a try. Of course, this path isn't a straight line. Every year, and this one is no different, I encounter hurdles, twists, and turns. Sometimes individuals are intentional. What I continue to learn is that he, he built me for such a time as this. The storm doesn't stay forever. He, he has built me to weather any storm. Now, of course, I have to say something about my students. The coming school year, my coming out of COVID-19 graders will graduate. We talked about this before school got out. My personal mission is to make sure that each one of them graduate. My kids will understand the assignment from day one of this coming school year. And lovingly, I say to all, please prioritize your self-care. Good night.
Our next public comment is Sandy Davis.
Hello, I'm Sandy Davis, and I'm another Fairmont parent, here to speak again about the budget cuts. I'd like to say first how very disheartening this whole process has been. A school district is not a business solely involved in crunching numbers and cranking out a project. The decisions of the board and the superintendent have a real impact on the lives of our students. And it has become clear that these decisions are based on information that is flawed at best and grossly inaccurate at worst. Since these cuts have been announced, Fairmont parents have shown up week after week to share the many reasons why our numbers don't accurately reflect our school's needs. From the 30-plus languages spoken at our school and the lack of forms available in anything other than English and Spanish, to incomplete spending numbers for the 2324 school year because of payments that have yet to clear. It has been incredibly frustrating that there hasn't been more curiosity or concern on behalf of the district about these discrepancies, especially with a cut as large as over $80,000 or 2/3 of our budget. Fairmont has a unique population and unique needs that aren't completely captured by our numbers. Instead of an all-or-nothing approach to Title I funding, I urge you to consider tiered distribution that would make Fairmont more equitably funded compared to both other non-Title I schools that have more parental financial support and Title I schools that receive financial support through their Title I funds. In addition, we ask that our site funds are cut at the same 16% rate as the rest of the district, rather than the 25% cut in the current budget, and that the CBO find other ways within the budget to cover our critical needs, specifically an additional site supervisor, additional counseling, and teacher intervention hours. We recognize that there is need elsewhere in the district, and we don't want to take resources away from other students. We just want the needs of our students, especially our Title I students, addressed in this budget as well. It feels like Fairmont is being allowed to slip through the cracks. I believe a more equitable budget can be drafted, and it is your responsibility to do so. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Jack. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Jack, and I'm a former Coromatsu student. The Spanish program was the reason my parents moved out to Point Richmond and the thing I've dedicated the last nine years of my life to, all on the promise that I would get into El Cero High School. This now has changed, and your decision will not only affect the next four years of my life, but for everyone else trying to transfer to El Cero High School. I personally have passions like the jazz band I got into and lifelong friends at the school. So I, just like all the other students here tonight and families here, I am willing to fight and make you do your job. We are asking you to staff our school. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Salon Harrison.
Good evening, Board. I've been here. So tonight I have a couple of things I want to address. The first thing I want to address is, and you'll hear more from us, but our LCFF, you can't do that. You can't move climate over LCFF and think you're going to address our over identification and suspension. We got to do better. We've had that all for all the kids and put it towards a problem, and it doesn't work. And then also, I just want to make sure you all understand, when you're recruiting and asking for more parents and you got parent leaders present and we're not getting respected by the board, we're not getting treated like y'all hear us and y'all understand where we're coming from, it's probably not the best time to recruit new parents. Maybe you should show respect and care about what we brought forward. Meet with us and talk to us and find out why we're not supporting the LCFF budget, why we want more from the district. We want data on our children so we can see how to make recommendations. We don't want to continue to have this kind of partnership with you all. We want a partnership where both sides are heard, both sides are valued, and our children are being educated. Right now, our children are in the red for suspensions. Our children are in the red for attendance. Our children and parents don't feel welcome. We want to change that. We can't do that by ourselves. We need y'all to listen to us, to hear us, and respect what we're bringing forth so we can make a difference. I'm not alone today. I have people with me that care about our children. There are fathers, there are mothers, there are grandmothers, and yes, I represent, but we also need you all to represent. You guys don't just serve one population. You serve a lot of populations that you have to educate. This is our future, and it does not depend on people and who you like. It depends on us working together and getting something done together. I'm complete. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Pedro Ruiz. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Hello, my name is Pedro Ruiz. I'm a recent Richmond High School graduate. The district has approved a Director of Student Recruitment and Retention position to specifically resolve our issues of declining enrollment and chronic absenteeism. Though according to the presented data, they had failed to do so. Enrollment would have ideally increased considering or given the expansion of TK programs, but the proposed budget status sort of presents the contrary. There's still been a lack of progressive action toward addressing this, which reflects our Director of Student Recruitment and Retentions' incapacity to effectively address and resolve these issues overall. In fact, the district had worsened matters by cutting numerous teacher positions and resources as vacancies still remain unfilled, which has been directly contributing to chronic absenteeism and would ultimately result in student attrition, which has exactly been the issue, in the sense that many families may opt to transfer their children to better-equipped schools in neighboring districts. And furthermore, the district had continuously blamed statewide systemic issues for contributing to this issue, and had also blamed charter schools for declining student enrollment, though had ultimately failed to develop an effective plan to fix this ongoing issue. And it kind of sort of reflects the whole fact that the district loves to blame external factors for such issues, but of course, like I said, fails to devise a well-planned solution. And apparently, the complaints that you guys received back in February have not been enough to motivate you, nor the complaints from parents have not been enough to motivate you to develop a well-planned solution. While you guys, of course, like to emphasize the urgency of these issues consistently, these consistent issues, and all I ask is that you show proof that our student recruitment and retention staff has actually taken progressive action and effectively approving student enrollment and attendance. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Kim Chamberlain.
Good evening. I'm Kimberly Chamberlain. I am representing IAT this evening. We would like to publicly thank Tracy Logan for her years of service with us. We are very blessed to have had a great leadership over the last six years. She has made our jobs not only intense and challenging, but fun. She made us want to come to work and continue to serve the students and ourselves. We truly appreciate it. But she is leaving us in excellent hands with Laurie Roberts. We are very blessed that we were able to have one of our own in the district come and work with us. She knows us. She knows our integrity for our work, and we are very grateful. Thank you very much.
Our next public comment is Isaiah Gonzalez. Please unmute yourself.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Howdy. Good evening. My name is Isaiah, and this is why I would like my friends to attend El Cero High. One of my reasons is that new students bring fresh ideas. Different views and learning curves make class more interesting. El Cero High has resources to help those kids get ready for college. Transfer students also get to enjoy the wonderful El Cero High School programs that they offer. This school has the potential to help new students be very successful in life. And this is why we're asking you guys to staff the school. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for listening.
Our next public comment is Christine Rinkey.
Good evening. My name is Christine Rinkey, and I am a Fairmont parent. I have two students, a rising fifth and a rising second grader. I'm here yet again to express my deep concern about the budget cuts that are in the current proposed budget for Fairmont and to express my concern about the budgeting process. and to express my concern about the budgeting process that has been described by other parents here tonight. I urge you to follow through with verbal commitments in writing to address safety concerns by increasing site supervisory staff, covering online licenses, and finding resources to ensure teacher interventions for students below grade level. As many have mentioned and as I have mentioned in previous comments, our students' needs have not changed and it is unfair that the resources and support for these students are being revoked. I know that there are some resources available to help students who are below grade level because we were, we received an invitation that was open to all parents to enroll our students in tutoring covered by the district at a for-profit tutoring company this summer. And while I very, very much support efforts to stem summer learning loss among our district students, I really advocate that those resources come into the schools and support our qualified teachers who know our students' needs as opposed to going to a for-profit tutoring company over the summer to only those families who are able to respond within a twenty-four-hour period. So I urge you again to make good on the promises and to follow through and hold the district accountable for providing needed resources to our Fairmont students. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Skylar Diaz. Please unmute yourself.
Hello?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Skylar Diaz, a first-generation student at El Cerrito High School. Now, the school district is a mess in regards to staffing issue with teachers. At the start of each school year, there are always vacancies. Some students have a plan on what they will be and select the course they need for their goal, but they can't receive the quality education they deserve because the school district keeps cutting teachers. Once the teachers leave, the students leave. And recent correlational data shows that chronic absenteeism has been rising because of vacancies. It shouldn't be possible to think that students are going to school with no teachers for half the school year. And substitutes usually just sit around after taking attendance, then allow you to do whatever you want and that is not productive, nor is it good for the schools. The students lose the reason to come to class and start skipping, which lowers the attendance, which lowers the amount of money the school gains, and which makes it so the budget cuts happen. It is a loop that will end tragically and the Student Recruitment and Retention Center or Department should be held accountable for its failure to improve student enrollment and the district for worsening such matters through position cuts and unfilled vacancies. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Zoma Machilanda. Please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Sorry, it's Sasha Han. I'm using another person's computer. Hi, my name is Sasha Han, former Fred T. Korematsu Middle School student. Korematsu was where I joined the dual-language immersion program, which I later learned was a group of students who have been together since kindergarten and have been promised they could continue the program to Korematsu and then to El Cerrito High School. This program has been something that we have committed up to nine years to and some people even moved and bought houses around the program. This strong community of students have been together for nine years, learning a language that will be extremely helpful to their futures. Are we going to let that crumble? I am not alone. I am with other students and other parents that believe that this program should continue and that we should work to make it continue. But that cannot happen if we don't have enough teachers to allow the transfers to be at the right schools. We are asking that you please staff our schools to help this program continue. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Russell. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you. My name is Russell. I've never attended a school board meeting before, so thanks for the chance to give me a chance to speak. I have a rising fourth grader at Washington Elementary and a rising ninth grader. I just wanted to really quick give my perspective regarding these transfer requests for students that came through the Spanish immersion program, starting at Washington Elementary through Korematsu Middle and were at one time promised that they would be headed to El Cerrito High School. This past spring has been really tough for this handful of kids. They were told for years that they'd be going to EC and then told, well, it's no longer an automatic thing, but not to worry, you just need to fill out this transfer request. And we trusted the process, you know, assumed that the little information we were getting was enough, but that process has been almost nothing but silence. First, we were told, well, you'll know for sure by May, and then May came and went and now June's nearly done. And I know that us parents and our kids, you know, who had patience and faith that the system was working are feeling sort of blindsided now. So it's almost July and that's really tough. What's really been tough is seeing the kids kind of one by one, starting to give up hope. My hope is that the first lesson these kids learn just before entering high school isn't that the system they've grown up in is about to completely let them down. So this can be fixed. You all know it can be fixed. Y'all are elected officials who have one employee and that's the superintendent of the school district. So I'm asking you to please direct Dr. Hurst to staff El Cerrito High School sufficiently so that these transfer requests can be granted and more provinces aren't broken. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Isaiah Moscaro. Please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself. Next public comment is Mirabel Chang. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, hello. My name is Mirabel Chang. I'm a former student of Fred T. Korematsu Middle School and I would like to talk about the dual-language immersion program. I have a lot of friends who have been in the dual-language immersion program throughout their school years and they were promised they would be able to go to El Cerrito, El Cerrito High School, which has a great Spanish program, but that doesn't seem to be the case. The district has taken minimal action to consider the needs of these students who have spent their time and have been dedicated to learning within the dual immersion program. I think it's unfair that they won't be able to go to the school they're choosing and continue their learning there. So please staff El Cerrito High School for their sake. Thank you for listening to me tonight.
Our next public comment is Jackson Rose. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Jackson Rouse. I'm a former student of Fred T. Korematsu Middle School. I joined the school district back when I was in kindergarten, about nine years ago now, when I was enrolled in elementary school. I'd also been enrolled in the dual-immersion program, which I have also been enrolled in for the past nine years. In this program, I've made multiple friends, friends that I will be distanced from the next year, my last year, in the West Contra Costa Unified School District. And I believe that we should staff our school so children will not have to be distanced from their friends like I will inevitably if we do not staff our school in soon. Thank you for your time.
Our next public comment is Meredith Jager. Please unmute yourself.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. I am the parent of a rising third grader at Fairmont Elementary. Like the other parents who spoke, I'm extremely frustrated and concerned about the loss of Title I funds that we need for our school. Nothing about our student population or student needs have changed, but this will result in the loss of pivotal interventions for our most struggling students. And I believe the loss of a site supervisor could lead to safety issues, defunding online licenses for our teachers to use to differentiate their curriculum is going to lead to less personalized education for our students and more stress on the teachers if they're using their own funds to have to pay for things such as classroom materials, less counseling, which is critical to serving our diverse population, and most importantly, cuts to enrichment opportunities such as music, art, and science is again going to be devastating to the student population. A twenty-five percent budget cut is huge. This is going to have a really unfortunate impact on the school. I have already seen three families leave personally due to these budget cuts and they are not only leaving the school, but public school entirely. So soon we won't even have families with the ability to contribute financially to make up for what the school is lacking. So I urge you, if these budget cuts are absolutely necessary, then cap hours at sixteen percent so that it is fair and equitable and the same to the other budget cuts in the district. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Romel. Please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself. And our last public comment is Carissa Provenza. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carissa Provenza. I'm a lawyer with Public Advocates. I'm here tonight in solidarity with the parents on the DLCAP Committee to once again urge you all to reject the 2024 to 25 LCAP. I noticed that amendments have not been made to the LCAP since last week despite the concerns raised by many of us at the LCAP meeting on Tuesday and at the LCAP hearing two weeks ago. As the LCAP stands currently, it is out of compliance. Voting to adopt the LCAP would mean submitting an LCAP to the county of education that is incomplete and inaccurate and did not go through the legally required engagement process. The LCAP is missing vital information, including the estimated actual expenditures for contributing actions from 2023 to 24 school year. These numbers help us all understand how much money was used last year in LCFF funds and how much is left over. All districts at this point have access to these numbers, so there is no excuse for this information to be excluded from West Contra Costa's LCAP. The LCAP is also missing required actions to address inequities based on student subgroups. This is a new requirement that is aimed to provide targeted supports for students based on California dashboard indicators. Clumping together all student groups into one broad action is improper and again is another example of this LCAP being out of compliance. LCFF requires transparency and ongoing engagement of parents and students in the development of the LCAP report. This year, no authentic engagement efforts were made and the district failed to present the LCAP draft to DLCAP and MDAC for review and comment as legally required to do so. Adopting this LCAP would deprive West Contra Costa community members of important information that they need to monitor implementation and will undermine the purpose and spirit of LCFF. Again, please reject this report and ensure that it is revised accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, staff, and thank you, community, for the public comment. We are now moving to agenda item B9, Agenda Review and Adoption. Board, we are ready to adopt the agenda. Are there any changes? Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to move E2, Adoption of the LCAP, up to the first action item.
You're asking to switch number two and number one? Or go two, three, four, five, six, and then one? Where would you like to place one?
Uh, I don't care about anything else, but I want the LCAP. I request that the LCAP is heard first before any of the other action items.
Dr. Hurst, if we move number two up, where would you like number one to fall?
Right after that, please.
Thank you. Or any objection to switching one and two? Seeing no objections. Any other comments on the agenda? Seeing none, the agenda is adopted with the change of switching E1 with E2. We are now moving on to agenda item B10, Approval of the Minutes, May 15th Minutes. Are there any changes? Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Yes, I have two very minor corrections. Please hold for one second. In B, Opening Procedures, Gonzalez has an A in it, so it's G-O-N-Z-A-L-E-S-H-OY. And then in D, Superintendent Communication, there's just a typo in activities. It is A-C-T-I-V-I-T-I-E-S. And with the approval, I'll email those in.
Staff, did you catch those changes? Okay, they caught those changes. Feel free to go ahead and email them in, but staff caught those changes. Any other changes to the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes are adopted without objection with the changes. We are now moving to Consent Item. Board, are there any consent items that we want to pull? Go ahead, Trustee Reckler.
Yes, please. C2, New Job Description Administrator on Special Assignment. And then C14, Ratification of Contracts. C15, Contracts. And C17, Use of Artificial Intelligence, AI Board Policy.
When looking at fourteen, Ratification of Contracts, particularly ones or the whole thing?
Both sets of everything, please.
Thank you for that. We are now moving on to, there's no more changes with the consent? Seeing no objections, the consent is adopted. We are now moving on to the Superintendent Communication.
Can we bring up the slides, please? So I'll just say that this is extremely difficult. You can see the slides before us. It's really about two powerful leaders that we have in Tracy Logan and Sonya Neely Johnson. And we'll just kind of flip through the photos slowly. But we are losing two amazing leaders from our district. And one of the things that was shared with one of our colleagues and one of our employees, they said, "We won't know the impact of them leaving until they're actually gone." And we have been reflecting on that and we know that that is true. They've had a profound impact on our organization. I know that Sonya Neely Johnson is not here, but for Ms. Neely Johnson, she is truly a leader. She's transparent. She's known for her honesty as well. She is a person of integrity and character. I've known her to care deeply about all people and especially all of our students. She's been a mentor to many and she is a person of high accountability. And for Ms. Tracy Logan, also, she is a leader. She's been a thought partner for myself in our one-on-ones especially. She's a strategic thinker, a strategic planner. She has the ability to build quality and authentic relationships. She's a team player. She's a team builder as well. And we just want to just take the opportunity and pause and just say, "Thank you, Tracy and Sonya." If you're listening, we thank you also for your service as well. We know that Tracy has been here for six-plus years and we know that Ms. Neely Johnson, we all know she's been here. and we know that Ms. Neely Johnson, we all know she's been here for twenty years, but in education for thirty years. And we just want to say, "Thank you. Thank you so much for your service and for who you are." Um, you've had a profound impact on me, I'm sure the board and the entire organization, and we will deeply miss both of you. And we just want to honor you with uh, some flowers, and we know, we've been we've been honoring them for the past few weeks since they announced it. We've had many celebrations, but not really a celebration, but we've had many um, gatherings just to celebrate them and who they are. And we've given them plaques as well, orchids, flowers. We've had food and fun and some tears also, um, but we just want to say we appreciate you. So if you can come, Ms. Logan. Yes, we want to take all, take a picture with Ms. Logan, if that's okay, and we're going to present her some flowers as well.
Come on, Miss Rosa.
And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Tracy Logan. We have a presentation, a video, and she's going to speak to it, and then we'll roll the video.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Um, I'm honored to be here this evening for my last time in front of this podium, in this particular role, at this moment in time. And I want to share with you a little bit about the work that has gone on every day behind the scenes in the IT department over the last year. So in September, the board approved our technology plan, and over the course of the last year, folks have been working hard to put it into action. So we are going to use technology to tell the story. We're not going to show facts and figures. We're actually going to do a little storytelling. And I want to say, first of all, thank you to everyone in the IT department. Many of us are introverts, and being in front of the camera is not our thing. So thank you for your courage and bravery. And I want to give a special shout out to a fabulous man behind me, Mr. Richard Bobis, who is usually, yes, give it up, give it up for Richard. He is usually behind the scenes making the AV work so that the audio is clear. Uh, this video is really the result of his creative genius, his dedication. He put in countless hours and listened to me uh, provide many outtakes over and over again. "No, Richard, cut this. Let's do this. How about that?" Um, and he made an incredible video. So thank you, Richard, for your dedication and for making this happen. And I will stop talking, and we can play the video. Thank you. Rosa, you have it, yes?
Hi, I'm Tracy Logan, and I'm the proud Chief Technology Officer for WCCUSD. For the past six years, I've had the privilege of working alongside you to strengthen our technology ecosystem so that every student in WCCUSD can thrive. In September of twenty twenty-three, the school board approved an ambitious three-year technology plan. It's now June twenty twenty-four, and as we wrap up our year one, we wanted to share with you an update on our progress of the five pillars of our plan. This video will give you a sense and a glimpse into the work that happens behind the scenes every day by the incredible IT department and our extended team to realize these important and ambitious goals. Our first pillar is Equitable Access, ensuring that every student has access inside and out of school to technology for learning. To learn more about this, I'm going to pass the baton over to Joel Morelles, one of our amazing senior techs.
Here at West Contra Costa Unified, we established a one-to-one laptop program in twenty eighteen to provide every student access to a Chromebook in and out of school. These Chromebooks are checked out to students who are responsible for taking care of them throughout their lifespan of four to five years. With time and with hard use, technology has to be repaired. And let's be honest, sometimes kids have accidents. The desktop and senior desktop support technicians maintain our fleet of twenty-five thousand Chromebooks and try to maintain an available supply of ten to fifteen Chromebooks for students to quickly swap their Chromebook while the damaged Chromebooks are being repaired. When a Chromebook is beyond the scope of repair, our technicians part it out and Frankenstein the parts into a fully functioning Chromebook. This saves the district many thousands of dollars on brand-new Chromebooks. To prepare our new and replacement Chromebooks, the team has Chromebook parties, which entail unboxing, inventorying, updating, and enrolling each Chromebook. This process is fairly time-consuming and takes about twenty minutes per Chromebook. Today I have with me Ms. Angela Jackson, an IMT at Pinal Valley High School and Pinal Middle School. Hi, Ms. Jackson.
Good morning. My role in student technology is to provide students with textbooks and Chromebooks. I interact with the IT team by troubleshooting Chromebook issues. We have hotspots available provided by the district, and the new hotspot Chromebooks are also available to students through the district. We have staff members in the main office who are available to help them fill out those forms. We also have bilingual staff members who are able to help them fill out those forms as well. The students are glad to have these Chromebooks available to them, and they enjoy using them at home and in the summer.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson, for allowing me to interview today and for being such an intricate part of our team.
Our next pillar is Teaching and Learning, ensuring that teachers and students have access to tools to innovate, to engage, and to inspire. I'm going to pass the baton now over to Laurie Roberts, our Dynamic Ed Tech Coordinator and soon-to-be CTO.
When we returned from the pandemic lockdown in late summer of twenty twenty-one, we found a few things. One of them is that teachers returned from the lockdown with way more skills in using technology. They also found that students returned to in-person school with more difficulties affecting their engagement with learning. Furthermore, our projection systems were nearing end of life. We learned a great deal from our twenty twenty-two, twenty-three small pilot through teacher and student surveys. Teachers found that the Promethean Active Panel met the needs of their teaching better than the projector, and it was easily viewed by all students. More importantly, many teachers felt that having a Promethean Active Panel pushed them to change the way that they teach. The Promethean Active Panel became the projection standard in June of twenty twenty-three. We've supported our teachers through professional learning provided by Grace Kelly, our Promethean Education Consultant, and through targeted technical support provided by Richard Bobis, our WCCUSD AV Technician. Our tech teacher leaders have been integral in the adoption of the Promethean Active Panels and in all other technology initiatives. They are the people who've made so much of it happen, keeping technology integration in all of its forms front of mind for their staff through regular reminders, professional learning, one-on-one support, and generally being educational technology cheerleaders and mascots.
For our next pillar, we'll hear from the brilliant Nicole Joyner, our Director of Systems, to learn more about our work on student data, reporting, and systems.
On the data side of the IT department, um, our work encompasses three areas. So the first area is data system management. Um, second is compliance reporting, and then third is training and support. In terms of our data systems, we have our major staff data system, which is Munis, and our student data system is PowerSchool. And it takes a lot to keep those up to date and uh, providing accurate data. Um, there's user management um, that we provide. There's troubleshooting. Uh, we also do updates and customizations and uh, system integration.
PowerSchool is the heart of the data that feeds to multiple systems in our district. We collect the data in attendance, demographics for students, incident management, enrollment registration, grading, historical grades, including transcripts that feed students to colleges, trade schools. We also work with the Student Information Compliance Team for CALPads.
Compliance reporting is really important for district funding. We are responsible for state and federal compliance reports through our office. Uh, one of the big ones is CALPads, which is a state-mandated report. And the School Accountability Report Card is another example of a state report. Sometimes people call that the SARC. Um, in terms of federal report, the Civil Rights Data Collection, uh, we also manage, and that occurs every two years.
As part of our compliance reporting, we use CALPads. And CALPads stands for California Longitudinal Pupil Achievement Data Systems. It is a data system that's used to um, help track student progress, inform educational policies, and meet state and federal reporting requirements.
Attendance reporting allows us to verify compliance with attendance laws. Accurate attendance tracking not only ensures compliance, but also directly impacts district funding. We support school staff in entering attendance into PowerSchool, coding absences accurately, and absence verification.
I work with collecting ADA through PowerSchool and student independent study contracts. I am also in charge on creating PowerSchool tutorial videos for parents and staff so that they can better navigate through PowerSchool.
Our final pillar is Operations and Cybersecurity. There's so much important work underway under the leadership of Director Wayne Lacy. Today, we want you to learn a little bit about how we grow our own in the IT department. I'm going to pass the baton to Luis, our all-around MacGyver in the IT department.
Hello, my name is Luis Nunez, here at the IT Department at West Contra Costa Unified School District. Um, I'm a desktop support technician, and I graduated from the ITA Academy here at Kennedy High School. Um, I'm here with Mari Cook, also from Kennedy High School, and she was one of our interns during this past summer and throughout the year this year. Um, how you doing, Mari?
I'm good.
During your time with us at the IT Department, um, what skills you think you've gained?
I learned love for computers and tech, and I've learned leadership skills, like taking on the role of um, making flyers for different policies within the district.
And for any future interns, do you have any advice for them?
Band-aids and just be prepared to work.
Band-aids? I see you got a bag there full of goodies. I know uh, we uh, you know, we wanted to get you something from the IT Department.
Yeah.
You want to check it out?
My own uh, fix-it kit.
I fix-it kit. Yep. Those things have every bits you need, cell phones, Chromebooks, laptops. Ooh, and to make it a little bit easier for you, we got you a drill there. Yeah?
Yeah, my PC is going to be built.
Oh, yeah. Yep. Now you got the equipment to build your PC. And uh, you know, hopefully we'll see you grow in the technology area.
Oh, yeah. That's my major.
Awesome. Yo, yeah. What school are you going to be going to?
Uh, UC Merced.
UC Merced. Awesome. Cool.
Computer Science and Engineering major.
That's awesome. All right. Well, congratulations, Mari, and thank you for being a part of our team.
Thank you for allowing me to have that experience.
As we wrap up year one of our three-year tech plan, I want to appreciate all of the great minds and big hearts that come together to make technology work for our kids. First and foremost, our IT department, which has some of the most dedicated and hard-working folks I have ever known. Secondly, to our fantastic tech committee made up of parents, caregivers, staff, students who volunteer their time and talents to guide this important work. Our TTLs, our IMTs, our office staff, the list goes on and on. Folks who do the work on the ground every single day to support students and staff. And lastly, honorary IT, like Francie the librarian. Thank you, thank you, thank you all from the bottom of my heart, and here's to a fabulous year two and beyond.
And before we turn it back over to the board president, we want to take the opportunity to recognize one of our student trustees who was not here at our last meeting. We did honor student trustee Camille Palkar. But now we want to just But now we want to just say a few words about Ms. Lola Abdou Gueparov. One of the things we'll say about her, she is a very hard worker. She's goal-oriented, she's very disciplined. She's involved in a lot. Not only is she a student board trustee, but she's also been part of the All-Student Congress and WCCUSD as an organizer. She's a statewide student fellow. She has been an intern for Asian Pacific Environmental Network. She's the gaming club vice president. She won first place for the National Engineering Design Competition. She had an internship at the Lawrence Hall of Science. She's a student athlete at Hercules High School and participated in track and cross-country. And she did all of this and maintained a GPA, weighted GPA of four point three. So we want to just say thank you for your service, Lola, and we do have a plaque for you presented to Lola Abdou Gueparov, Student Board Representative, Spring Semester two thousand twenty-four, in recognition of your leadership and service to the students of the West Contra Costa Unified School District. Thank you so much for your service.
Both of you step out in front, so you can take your picture. Superintendent, you guys step on it so you can take your picture.
And then I'll turn it back over to the Board President, thank you.
Thank you so very much for your superintendent report. Board, we usually go to questions. We can still go to questions, but if you would like to say anything to Ms. Logan and to our student trustee, now's the time to do it. So if we want to do comments, well, let me do this, any questions? Seeing none, anyone have any comments? Okay, let's put two minutes on the clock, please. We'll go trustee Ruckler, and then we'll go around. Wait for the clock, please.
Thank you, so I just wanted to know, do you sleep? Do you ever sleep with that schedule?
No, actually, yeah.
I didn't think so. Well, what I wanted to say is that I think you found your voice this semester up here, and I very much enjoyed having you, and I hope that you'll stay in touch. I'm going to give you a card with my information, and, you know, if you need a letter of recommendation or advice or a check-in. You know, I know you have a couple of years before you graduate, so I'm hoping to see you again. And then if I may flip to Ms. Logan, I just wanted to say thank you. You know, we really are going to lose very bright light in our district, and I want to thank you for all that you've done. And, you know, the tech, it takes a lot to keep it running smoothly. And you've done such a good job that if there's the smallest blip, it's like a major freakout. It's like, you know, a disturbance in the forest. So really thank you for keeping everything running for all these years so well. And I want to thank you for the work you did in the pandemic. You know, there was a massive scramble to get a device to every student, and I really appreciate your team's efforts. It was really pretty amazing to raise the money and get, I mean, you know, like, everybody had a, had a, had a device. I also want to say that, you know, I have a lot of, I think it's well-known that I have a lot of deep skepticism about tech in the classroom. But I also want you to know that I found everything that you've brought forward was so thoughtful and so well-investigated and so collaborative, and you came with like the teams, like a broad teams, yes, let's do it, and I've really always appreciated that. And it made me feel very confident in what has been done and what, you know, you've brought and we've been able to do for students. So best of luck to you. When one door closes, another opens, and it's going to be good on the other side, so thank you.
Trustee Phillips.
Thank you, I'm going to start with Mrs. Logan. You have done a tremendous amount of work for the district, but I don't really want to talk about that right now. I just want to say to you that I think you have a great spirit. You're a really nice person, you're a really caring person, you're thoughtful. You watch in a good way, and you're responsive. So I just want to say to you that I appreciate your spirit, and I've appreciated your spirit really since I've known you, so thank you very much for that. Mrs. Neely Johnson is not here. I just want to say to her, because I wasn't able to attend her celebration, you, if you're listening, you have been a blessing to not just the district, but more importantly, to the kids who are here. And so you're greatly appreciated for all that you've done, because you've done it with your heart, and so thank you very much. And to our student trustees, I would just like to say, and I'm trying to talk into the mic and look at you, so it's kind of funky. This is a very interesting space, and I think it would be even more interesting if I was walking into it as a teenager. But I think, like trustee Ruckler said, that both of you, and I'm speaking to both of you, have found a voice here. And I appreciate it, but I also appreciate your willingness to push back, right? If you think something, to say it, and to be willing to stand on it, because that takes courage in this space. And I hope that you continue to walk that way, because I think it will serve both of you well.
Trustee Christian.
Yes, I just want to say thank you to our student trustee, Algo Paro, right? I got it right. Thank you for your leadership, thank you for your service as a student, and thank you for showing, you know, being here and playing a part here on the board, and your work. We appreciate all that you're doing in all of your areas. Thank you, and be that strong leader and make some things happen. And, you know, go from there. And then also, I want to say thank you to Tracy Logan. Appreciate your service in the technology area, because technology is very important. And that area, you have to have a love, and, you know, your love for technology, and you made things happen. So thank you, thank you for your service. And also to Sonja Neely Johnson, also, we want to thank you as well. Appreciate you because you've been dedicated all your service in this district throughout the years, and you've done a lot of great work, and we appreciate everybody, because, man, it takes people with, you know, have that passion and love in what they're doing and made things happen as a student trustee and technology, Tracy Logan, and Sonja Neely Johnson, and all what she made happen in the district, thank you.
Thank you so much, trustee Christian. I'm going to go, and then I'm going to let student trustee give you a chance if you have anything to say. Ms. Logan, if you have anything to say, make sure that you guys have that opportunity to talk to the community and talk to the board. I want to say thank you to Ms. Neely Johnson. I hope she's not listening, I hope she's enjoying herself for this first board meeting where she is not required to be here. But I, I hope she knows how I feel about her, and I hope I've told her enough to where she knows how much she is appreciated and honored and valued for all the work that she's done. I will always remember how to show people value and deserve them by watching her, because she did an amazing job. Student trustee, I know I will see you a lot. I know that you are an amazing young lady. You turned up the volume on issues. And not only did you turn up the volume, but you made some system changes, both you and Paukar. So what we learn from you is immense, because it's solidified in how we move forward. And that's what you really want to leave. You want to leave a fingerprint everywhere you go, a positive fingerprint everywhere you go, and both of you did that. You are a rising junior. You have so much more to give and so much more to do, and we can't wait to be a part of that journey. We hope we left a positive fingerprint on you, because I know you left a positive one on me and the system. So thank you very much, both of you, thank you very much. Ms. Logan, you were quiet, but you were never silent. You walked into the room, and the energy that you brought in with you was loud, and it was positive, and it was good. But you also were very clear about your boundaries, your standards. And I don't think people messed with you because they didn't want to see that side of you. Always watch them quiet ones. So I don't think that, I think that you knew who you were. And I think that you gave a lot to the district, and we are very sad to see you leave, but we support you. And this is always going to be your home, always come back to us. And I have to say, you are an amazing co-conspirator in the anti-racist work, and you need to know that, and we thank you for that. And we hope when you do check in with us, you see us growing and moving forward. I'm complete. Trustee, student trustee, would you like to say anything?
I would, I'm so glad that you asked. Thank you all so much for your kind words. I don't even know where to start. I recently had an interview, and they asked me what my favorite extracurricular was, and it was obviously this. There was no doubt in my mind, because there's, there's just, there's just so much. It's such an interesting extracurricular. I really look forward to the meetings every day. And I didn't even know that we didn't have to go to this one, and I'm so sorry that I missed the last one. I was in a conference. I don't know if you've heard of it, it was like the Community School and Power Summit, and a lot of people from the district were like, oh, wow, they shouted you out, it was super nice. And I was like, what? That's so, that's so nice. Yeah, I just, I don't know how to put into words, and I don't think two minutes is enough to explain how much I love this extracurricular and how much everyone on this board and everyone sitting over here have, like, left an impact on me. I like, there's so many days I go home, and I'm like, oh, my God, like, there's so much to think about. And sometimes that's positive, sometimes that's negative, it's mostly positive. And I did want to let everyone know, everyone on the board, how much good you are doing. And I noticed it's so hard to sit up here and hear, like, some public comments that kind of villainize you guys. And I know that it's hard, and I know they're coming from a good place, but I did want everyone of you to know that you're doing so much good. You guys are all amazing, and I really appreciate this opportunity, it was so amazing. And also, I'm so sorry that I took away the spotlight from Tracy. Ms. Tracy, she is so kind, she was, I think, the first person I met when I came here, and I really set up the atmosphere. I was like, oh, like, she was just very helpful, and I really appreciate that. And again, there's so many good words I could say, but I don't want to run out of time. Also, Camille, so inspiring, like, I watched the last board meeting, and I heard how much you were doing, and I was like, oh, my God, you are too humble for how much you are doing. Okay, I'm complete, thank you.
You are very welcome. Ms. Logan, director Logan, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Yes, thank you, although I think we should just leave it at Ms. Lola's words, because that was beautiful. I really just want to say thank you all so very much for this opportunity. I have grown so much as a leader in my six years. I've learned how to have a quiet but strong voice. Thank you, President Smith Folds, it's something that I was challenged with doing, but I believed in deeply. And thank you, Dr. Hurst, for trusting me, for seeing me, for pushing me. Thank you to my team for all of your, just, oh, now I'm going to cry again. I have just really valued this time, it's been a labor of love. I take with me all of the lessons, and this is my home, it's my heart. I will be back, and thank you for the opportunity to go and do what I need to do to be with my family. And I wish you all the best, all my love, and until next time, thank you.
Thank you so very much, if we can clap for everyone tonight, please. Thank you so much, we are now moving-
President Smith Folds, point of order. I was really expecting Ms. Neely Johnson to be here. I brought her a present, she didn't show up. May I take one minute, just in case she's online, or for the, just to record for the public record, a short statement?
Absolutely, go ahead.
Great. So Ms. Neely Johnson, if you're listening, if you're not, I met her about ten years ago at Coromatsu Middle School, and immediately I was just taken by her effervescent and bubbly personality, and that is the way she has always been, has been positive and charming and accommodating and just a wonderful spirit. But the, what I really want to note for the record about her is her undying advocacy for the most marginalized children in our district, and how she has fought every day for children that have special needs. And I've always appreciated that, and I've learned so much from you, if you're listening. And I do have a gift for you, I'll find out how to get it for you, to you, and I'm sorry I missed your party, and I just want to say thank you and best to you. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Okay, we are now moving to E two, we're moving to E two. Dr. Moses, this is your item, go ahead.
Thank you, good evening, President Smith Folds, trustee, superintendent Hurst. This evening, we bring back for action the adoption of the the adoption of the twenty-four, twenty-five Local Control Accountability Plan. This plan represents the district's comprehensive plan for goals, actions, services, and expenditures that support positive student outcomes and address state and local priorities. This plan is a tool for the district to set the goals, plan the actions, and arrange to leverage resources to meet those goals and improve these student outcomes. This plan, the twenty-four, twenty-five LCAP Plan, includes the community budget overview, federal addendum, and the two thousand twenty-four annual update for two thousand twenty-three's plan, which reviews the outcomes and expenditures. The two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five LCAP is the first of a three-year plan cycle. It includes continued funding for district-wide services with a focus on our own duplicated student groups. The LCAP also provides support for underperforming subgroups, students with disabilities. These programs are organized around the strategic plan goals, which are authentic engagement, universal systems and structures, relentless attention to achievement, agency, and access, students with disabilities, and targeted intervention and support. A public hearing was held on June twelfth to share information regarding this plan. Staff provided the information at that time and the associated documents. The public hearing offered parents, students, and community members an opportunity to review all of these documents and provide feedback. In addition to the pre-sees, I think I'd just like to add that this plan was created as a collaborative across district departments and in conjunction with county support. Our district team met with the county leaders weekly and went step by step through each section of the plan in order to ensure that what our district is proposing is compliant with the LCAP plan. We appreciate the support of the county and the collaboration of the team, but we also want to acknowledge that this is a living document and that adjustments will be made, and feedback and input are always taken into account and always available for proposals for changes to this plan. We are bringing this forward tonight to recommend that the board approve this plan as a part of our budget adoption process. If the LCAP plan is not approved, then we will not be able to present a budget for approval this evening. If we aren't able to bring a budget forward for approval this evening, then we delegate that responsibility to the county to create a budget for us. So we are asking that you approve this this evening in accordance with our budget adoption process. I am complete.
Thank you so much, Dr. Moses. Board, we're going to do three questions and two minute comments. First, are there any public comments?
Yes, we have one public comment, Pedro Ruiz, please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, give us one second.
Of course.
Okay, you may go ahead.
Fairmont Elementary and other, many other elementary schools with high-low income student populations are losing Title I statuses despite the great inconsistent demands, um, parents, many parents and families are sort of tossing at you right now to sort of reverse or to stop the, um, approval of this LCAP, um, this LCAP proposal as it presents inaccurate data that reflects or does not reflect the, uh, needs of our students at all. And this has happened, it's despite, like I said, despite the many urgings from many parents, you still continue. So, all I ask is for, that you don't, all I ask is for that you don't approve this LCAP proposal. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Alon Harrison. Please unmute yourself.
Can y'all hear me? Hello? Can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello? Oh, yes. Please understand, if the county approved this, if the county walked lockstep with trying to get this done, this is outrageous. They, uh, they need, we need more information. Uh, the parents are, especially the black parents. We're going to go talk to the county. This is unacceptable. If this was done with the county and we don't have no information and they approved of y'all doing to black children like that and not giving them no resources and putting the resources you're giving them under there with all the children, like that's going to work. That's not going to work. We need to work, we need to put something on that LCAP for our children that we know we can get what we want out of there. That's our students thriving and achieving. That's what, that's what y'all LCAP said y'all was going to do. How are y'all going to do that? And there's no way for us to know. We just waiting and waiting for what? If we approve it, what is our kids going to get? If we don't approve it, we know they're going to be in the same place. I'm complete.
Next public speaker is Alamo Brown. Please unmute yourself. Mr. Brown, please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Can you give my time back, please? I'm sorry. Can you give my time back, please? Thank you very much. This is Rodney Alamo Brown, a community advocate here in the city of Richmond, California. I think there should be some more, uh, widespread communication in regard to the LCAP, uh, situation that's currently going on. When I think about this situation, I think about Brown versus the Board of Education. We're talking about equity. We're talking about things that involve black children and what should be rendered in terms of what's equitable. Uh, I understand that this new school year is coming up. There's things, uh, that needs to be remedied. But let's think about this situation and let's make sure that our children are, are getting what they so well deserve. Uh, I also think about Ruby Bridges. I also think about James Meredith, uh, in Oxford, Mississippi, as well as in, in Little Rock, Arkansas, and the things that they have to go through just to even get an education. We're in twenty-twenty-four. It's time to move the needle forward. Let's work together collectively as a team and come up with a comprehensive plan. God bless you all. Thank you.
Next public comment is Lucas Menenix.
Hello again, board. Uh, my name is Lucas Menenix. I am the current chair of the DLCAP Committee. And we come to you tonight as a DLCAP Committee to once again ask you to reject this LCAP. Each year, we come here and we ask for a process to properly analyze the performance of our programs within the LCAP. And each year, the district fails to provide such process. If you vote to approve this LCAP, you're not only voting, uh, for an LCAP that is out of compliance, as stated by Ms. Prevenza, but you're also voting against transparency, accountability, and you're voting against parent voice. So, we ask you to please honor your commitments to equity and student achievement by rejecting this LCAP. Every year, we keep putting, kicking this down the line because we're so afraid of the county coming in and, and creating a budget for us. And so, this is the result we're going to get every single time if we don't make a stand here tonight and reject this LCAP. Thank you.
That concludes public comment. Thank you very much. Board, again, we are going to do three questions and two minute comments. Does anyone have questions? We're going to go from right to left. Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Thank you. Are there any changes, uh, in the LCAP between the one that was published on, what was it, June twelfth and tonight?
There have not been any changes to the LCAP primarily due to the hearing process and bringing this forward to you this evening. Uh, the changes that, uh, we did not receive any direction to make any changes from the board or otherwise. And so, there weren't any changes implemented with the understanding that this is a living document and changes don't need to be made immediately. They can be made at any time.
Is the document legally compliant in all ways, including parent, uh, especially LCAP committee engagement?
According to the team that put the document together, um, we are compliant. Um, we did have partnership with the county, working through each section to ensure that the information that was placed inside is compliant with what's being asked of us. I do want to clarify that the county did not create any goals. They did not, uh, create the LCAP metrics. But what they did was ensure that throughout the process, we were following the protocols and the expectations as the county will be the final approver of this document.
Finally, what do you have to say about public advocates and their, uh, claim that the document is not in compliance?
Well, I don't have a statement regarding that because I'm not exactly sure exact, what they're speaking to. I do know that as with any large document, nothing's perfect in the first draft. So, I'm not sure if there is something we need to take a look at, but if so, as I, um, I'll restate that this is a living document. If we do find that there is, uh, an area that needs more attention, we'll give attention to that area. I also want to point out that, um, if this is approved to move forward, the county then does the final approval and they can approve, they can disapprove, or they can approve with conditions. If there is a finding that there is some area that needs additional attention, um, then we would be notified by the county with approval for conditions. Uh, we believe that it is compliant, but, um, we would wait for that, um, validation from the county.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Reckler. We're going to go to trustee Christian. Your three questions, sir.
All right, thank you. Um, you know, just based on hearing, you know, just the comments, you know, um, from those who mentioned about the equity, um, of the LCAP. And based on a lot of the comments that were made this evening, I just need some clarification, you know, where, um, are some of the African-Americans in the LCAP? Or, because I keep hearing a, a lot of people mention the same thing over and over again.
Thank you for the question. Um, the LCAP is a comprehensive document, but off the top of my, um, based upon what I can state for you right now, I can share with you that the entire Office of African-American Student Achievement is funded through LCAP. Uh, by doing that, we're showing, um, and a, a focus on having dedicated individuals to carry out, um, actions to directly meet the needs of our African-American students. That's a large investment of the LCAP. The LCAP also invests in English learners with additional support. Um, the LCAP is charged with supporting every subgroup. And if you read through the document, you will find areas where every subgroup is getting support. Um, if I may, I think what I'd like to state is our issue, as I understand it, is that the data that, uh, demonstrates how effective those systems were this year wasn't in a, a comprehensive, wasn't presented in a comprehensive way that the parents were satisfied that they could understand, that the strategies were effective. And as a team in business services and educational services, we're committed to moving forward with future DLCAP meetings to ensure that data is provided consistently, not only regarding the budget, but also the goals, so that we can begin to build the relationships with our, our communities and our families because we do want them to trust us. And as an educator in this district, I also want to speak to the team that put this together because I believe that all of the educators who worked on this plan do want our students to succeed, are working towards making sure our goals are strengthened and our, our results are, um, improved and increased. So, um, I'd be the, I, I'd agree that we have a lot of work to do, but we've always had a lot of work to do. And now we need to work differently in order to make sure that we achieve the results that we're looking for. I agree with the advocates that have spoken tonight. We have to make sure that we're serving our students better. And I'm committed to doing that. And I know we have a team behind this LCAP that's committed to doing that. We just need to work on the communication with our DLCAP and our community at large in order to prove to the community that we're, we're behind that effort.
All right, thank you. Um, that's the only question, yeah.
Trustee Phillips, you have any questions?
My mind is spinning right now. Um, I'm just going to sit and process.
Okay, I'm going to move to the student trustees and then give you a second. Trustee Phillips, and come back. Student trustees, you have any questions about the LCAP?
Not at the moment. Thank you.
Okay, trustee Palcor, any questions?
No.
Thank you so much. Trustee Phillips, you still processing, sir?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you so very much. Dr. Moses, I want to be clear, um, that I understand something. If the LCAP does not pass tonight, that means the budget cannot pass tonight. Is that accurate?
That is correct. If the LCAP is not approved, then we would not move forward with an approval of the budget. The LCAP is a portion of our operating budget. If we don't pass this, we are not able to bring that budget forth for any consideration this evening. And we have Javetta Cleveland, um, promoted as a panelist. She may also be able to add, um, more detailed information about that process. Would you like to hear from Ms. Cleveland?
I would. Board, if we could hear from Ms. Cleveland, just to add a little clarification, and then I would like to go back to my other two questions. Go ahead, Ms. Cleveland. Thank you.
Um, Kim said it very well. The budget and the LCAP are required to be aligned and therefore the LCAP must be approved before the annual district budget can be adopted. In the event that the LCAP or the budget is not, um, submitted to the county office, um, uh, the county superintendent Shale, at the district's expense, developed the budget for the district by September fifteenth and transmitted to the school district governing board. The budget is deemed adopted as transmitted unless the county superintendent approves any modifications made by the school district governing board. The approved budget shall guide the district's priorities. The superintendent of public instruction shall review and certify the budget approved by the county superintendent. And based on my understanding, this budget could be reverted to last year's budget or the proposed budget, whichever is less, whichever is less. Therefore, the district could be operating on a much lower budget than proposed. Kim is correct that the county could, um, approve both documents conditionally if there's something that needs to be revised. So, they can be, actually do a conditional approval and that revision could include a parent involvement process or something to that nature.
Thank you so very much, Ms. Cleveland. Uh, Dr. Moses, my question is, can you restate one more time? What happens if the county then sets our budget? I think I heard what Ms. Cleveland said, but can you summarize it for me and just first this or this and that for me, please?
Absolutely. If we're unable to pass the budget tonight, we would have to go back. We would have to revert back to last year's budget. And we would have to control our expenditures based upon the amount of last year's budget until such time that the county superintendent presents us with a budget. Um, and at that time, we could then revert to the amount of funds that we actually have available because we'll have an approved budget. Um, so it does mean that if we don't, if we aren't able to pass the budget tonight, we're going to need to do some shifting in order to ensure that we're compliant with the expectation that we shift back to last year's budget.
Thank you very much. And my last question is, because this is a living document, because it goes to the county as a living document and because we have made commitments on how to tighten up things that system, system, uh, wide issues, can you tell me, let me ask, I'm sorry, let me ask it this way. Has there been movement and discussion from the last meeting that we had to this meeting that we had? Not action, because you needed board, you needed board direction for action, but what, what has developed from last time to this time? What actions has the district taken that they could take? And what do you have as, compound question, and what do you have in the next couple of steps in the LCAP?
Yes, thank you for the question. I can only speak as to what's happening in business services and state and federal. As you know, we're having a, a transition in our chief academic officers. And I don't want to speak for Ed Services since we'll have a new partner there got, leading the team. Uh, but in terms of the state and federal department, Director Paul Mancing and Business Services Director Jeff Carter, uh, I've met with the two of them to specifically discuss the LCAP, to specifically discuss the need to ensure not only that we're providing up-to-date and frequent budget data, but we're meeting about things such as contracts, making sure that the metrics connected to the contracts are metrics that are going to allow us to bring the appropriate data back to the community where money is concerned. Um, now, in order to, uh, find out what's happening on the educational side, I would have to have you to, uh, ask those questions of, uh, Ms. Acosta Verproscus, uh, because I'm not at liberty to answer that, but I know that our team is committed to ensuring that we get this right for the community and we hear them loud and clear that they need more from us. So, as a business services team, we are prepared to do that.
Thank you, Dr. Moses. Just to clarify, was there a meeting with DLCAP leadership between, uh, Ju- June twelfth and today?
Uh, I believe there were two. I can speak to one and then pass it to Dr. Hurst. Uh, Dr. Hurst, myself and, and, uh, Associate Superintendent of Operations, Ms. Sigler. Uh, we met with the executive team of DLCAP just to hear clearly what they need us to work on. Um, we were all in a listening mode during that meeting. We did take their feedback, uh, in order to create some next steps. Uh, the issue is, uh, our chief academic officer will not be assuming her position until next week. So, we haven't gotten as far as to create plans moving forward because we're missing a member of the team. But we certainly did hear them out, understand what needs to happen. And we will, we do have a plan to address it as soon as the team is complete. And I'll pass it to Dr. Hurst because I believe there was a DLCAP meeting as well.
I can speak to the meeting that we had with the, um, executive, uh, board of DLCAP. And I'll just share with you, there was certainly some frustrations that were shared, uh, from that board. Um, some of the big pieces that I repeated back to them was, um, authentic family engagement, wanting to be heard, wanting to be listened to. And we really, as Dr. Moses said, we were in the listening mode. Um, they talked about really presenting data and presenting it in a timely manner. Um, also, there was questions about the ninety percent, um, uh, of staff that's in the, uh, LCAP. Um, and Dr. Moses spoke to that, um, that it's really the people that's doing the work. Um, there was a question around specificity of the goals and the action items as well. And again, we were in the listening mode. Um, there was this theme around, uh, really looking at programs, the execution of programs, and then the evaluation of the execution as well. And then there was a conversation really about, um, just wanting to see change and change happening and really being held accountable, uh, by the community, um, or implementation and seeing that change. And then there was, um, um, just logistical pieces that we discussed as well and how we're gonna move forward. And we did chime in also, some of the concerns was just around um, process of those DL cap meetings, uh, expertise level and skill as well. So we met as, um, as executive team and we decided how we're gonna move forward with that as well.
Thank you so much. Board, we are now moving to a motion. Is there a motion for the adoption of the twenty-four, twenty-five local control accountability plan, the LCAP? Is there a motion? I'll move, I'll move the adoption of the twenty-four, twenty-five local control accountability plan or LCAP. Is there a second?
I'll second it. Reckler will second.
Thank you, trustee Reckler. We are now moving to comments. Can we put two-minute comments on the board? Trustee Reckler, we're gonna go from right to left.
For the past two years and now this year, making it three years, I find myself making the same comments about the LCAP. That is, the presentation to the board concentrates heavily on state-required compliance metrics and does not succinctly show how the program in the LCAP performed, how money was spent, and how the community's feedback was incorporated into the plan. To me, there are three parts to this thing: money, program success, and community engagement. First, money. How much money do you get this year and how much did you get last year? What is the difference? How much carryover do you have and why? Then, where did you miss in big dollars, either wildly overspending or underspending, and why? Second, how did your programs perform? What programs hit goal? What missed? What don't you know the answer to? And if you don't know the answer, what can you guesstimate? For all of those things, your reasoning. Then, what are you changing in the LCAP and why, along with the corresponding dollars? Finally, community engagement. What feedback did the LCAP committee give you and how did you incorporate it? I think there are only five members on this committee. We used to have a robust, messy, beautifully engaged LCAP committee of probably thirty members, and we were feeling heard. While I value deeply the work of staff and I recognize the pressures that you are under, I am frustrated that I have to spend an entire weekend trying to figure out the changes in the LCAP. It should be self-evident. This three-year LCAP is collapsed into so many category, collapsed so many categories into big buckets that I can't make sense of it, and this document seems to be less transparent than ever before. I don't know how else to get your attention and I will not be held hostage. For these reasons, I am voting no.
Any other comments? Trustee Christian, go ahead.
Yes, what I'm just saying is, you know, transparency is very important for the board to know the information, what's going on and, and be, and things to be explained about the LCAP and what needs, you know, what we need to look at, the layout of the land. And so, um, we, we gotta have, you know, better transparency, you know, um, not, you know, we come to the board meeting and boom, here it is. But no, we, we all should be informed and, and knowing the information and knowing the layout and knowing how everything should operate. So, that's my comment.
Thank you, trustee Christian. Any other comments? I have a comment. If we can get the two minutes back up. Thank you so much, staff, for your work on the LCAP. Thank you to the community for your input on the LCAP. I would, I would be remiss if I didn't say that there are things that we need to do differently, but I think that everyone is acknowledging that. Now, the next step after you acknowledge something is to show that change. Consistency over time equals change and that breeds trust. I would love to see a calendar and on that calendar, we put when um, the LCAP is coming back to DL cap, coming back to MDAC, coming back to ASAT. So it's just laid out very clearly and open and transparent to the community. That calendar can then be published so the community will know these are, we're talking about LCAP at this meeting. Dr. Hurst, we talked about last time about having the LCAP come to board meetings as part of the agenda. Just like we talk about budget, we talk about LCAP. These are all system changes that can create the transparency that we're both looking for and the two-way communication that we're all desiring to have when it comes to the creation of the LCAP and not only the creation of the LCAP, but the continuation of making it the document that, and the tool that we want to use throughout our schools. I would like to speak to the fact that the necessity to have to pass this to keep local control, to keep control over our budget, to keep control over the immense amount of work that we put and you put and your team put, and the district put, and the community put in riding this ship. We are finally not upside down, but right side up. And the goal is to try to stay right side up and then start moving in this water. We have to move to a level of completion. We need to move to a level of just moving. We have to move. And I think that that's something that we can all agree with. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't even see it. It didn't buzz. Um, thank you very much, everyone. I will be voting yes on this living document so we can continue to have local control and move in the right direction. I'm complete. All right, board. Pardon me for going over. I wasn't looking at the clock. We are now going to move to the vote. We are voting on the adoption of the twenty-two, twenty-five local control accountability plan, the LCAP. We are going to start with trustee Philip. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We're gonna start with the student trustees. Student trustee Palcar.
I'm going to abstain.
Thank you. Student trustee Abdukhbarov.
No.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips?
No.
Thank you, trustee Reckler.
Reckler? No.
Thank you, trustee Christian.
Abst- abstain.
And I'm a yes. The LCAP has failed to be adopted. So, uh, Ms. Cleveland, do, I'm sorry, may I ask Ms. Cleveland a question, Dr. Moses? Ms. Cleveland, because the failure of the LCAP adoption, we can't even go to agenda item E three, the adoption of the twenty-four, twenty-five annual budget. Is that correct?
Yeah, the LCAP must be approved before the annual district budget can be adopted.
Okay, so with that being said, we would, as the, as the board, we would then not do E three, correct? Okay. All right. Thank you for that. We are now going to move to item E one, which is the twenty-four, twenty-five single plan. I'm sorry, Dr. Moses, I have a question. Because the budget wasn't adopted, because the LCAP wasn't adopted, can SPSAs be adopted? Because all of that deals with money, because then we have to revert back to whatever the county's gonna do, which we may not know yet. Is that accurate?
You know, I asked a lot of questions before this vote because I knew there was a possibility it wasn't passed. And this frankly is a first. People couldn't answer my question because I'm not sure that this has happened before. That board has not passed an LCAP. I'll need to get more, more answers, talk to Fitmat, and see how to proceed.
So now it seems as if going to agenda item E one, we don't know what would happen. So I feel like if we vote in SPSAs and then have to turn around and put a stop on them, that does more damage, correct? Because we can't release funds, or can we? Oh, uh, excuse me, one second. Trustee Phillips, I do see you. Dr. Moses, it seems like you, you're not sure yet about that, correct? Okay, so I'm gonna take trustee Phillips' question, and then what I think we're gonna do is take a, would it be prudent to take a break? You can't, you don't have, you don't have a connection to Fitmat right now.
I make a motion.
Nine o'clock. Oh, you have a motion. Hold on one second, sir. You don't have access to Fitmat at nine o'clock at night, my assumption.
No, I don't. And I, yeah, I have a lot of questions because I don't know how to not move forward.
Okay, thank you for that. Trustee Phillips, go ahead with your motion.
I think you're right.
Uh, I usually am. Go ahead, sir.
Um, I moved to table item E one.
Okay, so that would be?
Just, I moved to table item E one,
Uh huh.
twenty-two, twenty-five, single plans for student achievement.
Okay.
Um, until the board gets direction that it is appropriate to approve our confirmation, uh, that it is appropriate for us to consider this item.
Okay, and sir, would you like to put a date on when you would like that to come back so we can have a a, a, a sense of urgency? So our next meeting is July seventeenth. Would you like it to be tabled until July seventeenth?
So I don't have a date because I don't know when it's gonna come back, but I'm assuming that, um, the confirmation, you would be the first one to know as the board president and that you would just re-agendize it.
So with that, thank you for that. Because we had, you remember our parliamentarian, Ms. Tammy? She always said we had to put a date on it. Dr. Moses, could we put July seventeenth on it? Would that give you enough time to get the information back for the board?
I think we'll need to consult prior to that. I'm not sure we can move any contracts, any expenditures, any purchase requisitions. I believe we have to put a stop to all of those until we have the answers. So this in essence ties our hands for everything other than what we're legally obligated to do, which is to pay salaries. So we may need a board meeting, an emergency board meeting, in order to be able to operate the district.
Thank you so much. Ms. Cleveland, I see your hand.
Yes, um, I'm requesting and asking the board if they could reconsider. If you could recommend, um, I could, I want to recommend approval of the LCAP and have the county office approve with conditions that allow you to get, um, parent feedback and revise it. So you're, we're asking that the board go back and approve the LCAP with knowing that the county could do a conditional approval to revise the LCAP to get parent feedback. Um, this is really serious to go for without a budget. The district cannot operate without a budget. The district can't meet or, or establish priorities without a budget. And then if it's a lower budget based on prior year, then there's gonna be priorities in school sites that won't get the funding level that they need to move forward to, um, educate the students next school year. This is pretty serious not to go for it and at least, and knowing that this LCAP can be revised. You know, it can be revised. This is not a document that cannot be revised after tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Cleveland. Dr. Hurst, could you please get one of the lawyers on the phone and see if they can jump online? Trustee Phillips, your recommendation was your motion, I'm sorry, your motion again, if you could restate it for me, please?
My motion is that we table item E one, twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty-five, single plans for student achievement until the board gets confirmation that it is appropriate for us to consider that item.
Thank you so much. Trustee Reckler, you had your hand up.
Reckler will second, and I have another motion. Um, and you might want to put this on your list for legal, so.
Hold on one second. You're seconding trustee Phillips' motion?
Yeah.
And then you're gonna add another motion on the floor?
I'm gonna put another motion on. And you may want to also ask legal about this, about the two motions. I think that would be a good thing to do. My motion would be to at least discuss E one, which is the twenty-four, twenty-five, single plans for student achievement. So the board could discuss it and then the board could decide based on what legal says, either to action it or to table it, if that makes sense. So at least we could discuss it, but we wouldn't have to take action on it. So maybe relisting it as a discussion item and you may have more knowledge than I, and so I would recommend that we ask, uh, trustee Phillips why his hand is up.
So is there, first of all, is there a second to the motion that trustee Reckler put on to discuss, to just discuss E one? Let me see if there's a second first. Are you seconding, sir?
So, so what I was gonna say, um, just, it might be quicker. If you want to discuss, sorry, Madam Chair, if a board member wants to discuss item E one, I could withdraw my motion so the discussion could take place or the questions could take place like they normally would. And when that is done, I could just make the motion again.
What you're saying is if the board decides to discuss E one, you will withdraw your motion to table that item simply so it can be discussed. Is that correct? And then after the discussion, you would make your motion to table. Is that what you're saying?
We might not actually get to discussion because there's a motion to discuss, but if people want the presentation and then they want to be able to ask questions, I could withdraw my motion until after the board.
Go through that process.
Yes, and then make it again.
Thank you for that. Dr. Moses, did you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I just want to point out that tied to the SPSA is a budget.
So we can't, that's, that was my concern because if the SP, all SPSAs are allocated funds. If we have to revert back to any other budget, those funds cannot be used until the county looks and says, this is now what you can allocate to each school. Is that correct or no? Am I hitting it a little bit or not?
Our fiscal year ends June thirtieth.
Yes, ma'am.
Schools will not be able to spend funds until, they, they will have to revert back to the old budget, which is the old SPSA. So until such time that the county develops a budget for us to move forward, they could not move forward with new goals because they do not have a new budget.
Okay, this is what I want to do. And I'm gonna take a little bit of presidential privilege here. Because this is so much uncharted territory, because we're going into things that we are just not sure about, I want to take about a fifteen-minute break to see if we can get the lawyer on the phone to see if you can have a conversation with Ms. Cleveland to bring back more, more information about this particular agenda here, what we can and cannot do because things are tied to budgets and budgets make a difference. Let's take a fifteen minute, see if we can get a lawyer on the phone. Every, uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Rosa, if you could put a fifteen minute on there. Community, we will return in fifteen minutes. Thank you very much, everyone.
Okay, so here, uh, clarification. We want to be crystal clear about next steps and what's happening. So we talked to our lawyer and this is what Mr. Harold said. Mr. Harold said that Ms. Cleveland talked to us about a reconsideration. Mr. Harold said a motion by someone in the negative, that means someone who voted no, can ask for a reconsideration. Anyone can second that, but someone who voted no must then turn or must be the one to make a reconsideration motion. The question was, does it take a vote of three to reconsider? Rosenberg's, Rosenberg's puts it with the majority, is that correct? So the majority of the board can vote to then reconsider. Mr. Harold, is that accurate? That's correct. Okay. Is there someone willing to make a motion of reconsideration? It will only be someone who voted no. That would be Mr. Phillips or trustee Reckler. Would you like to make a motion of reconsideration, any one of you?
Wait, I have a question. Is that okay?
Are you gonna ask? Can you make a motion to reconsider?
Are you gonna ask, can you make a motion to reconsider?
No.
No, okay. Well, the question, the answer is, I asked that question just in case. The answer is because student trustees are advisory votes, you cannot make a motion to reconsider. But feel free to ask a question, go ahead.
Okay, um, so did you ask the lawyer, like, what would happen, like, in, uh, what would we do if we were to not reconsider, like, where, what would we do with, like, the budget items that are related to LCAP?
That's a good question. I did not ask the lawyer that, but the lawyer was present when we had that discussion. So that's a great question for Dr. Moses, and Dr. Moses will turn around and, uh, ask that question in just one second. So he, or she will answer that question in just one second, but that is a very good question, and we did ask. Um, I'm looking to see anyone willing to reconsider. I do not see anyone. Okay, there's not a motion to reconsider. Dr. Moses, if you could answer trustee Pau, sorry, not Paukhar, Abdou Kbar, Abdou Kparo's question about now what happens?
I think the only thing that we can do as a business services department is just halt all actions until we get direction from the county, directions from FICMAT, um, about how we proceed, because I don't know what happens next, other than I do believe we'll still be able to meet our legal obligations, but I'm not sure we'll be able to do much else because it's something that is unprecedented.
Trustee, it's Abdou Kparo.
Um, so I'm just wondering, like, would this have happened if this, like, came to us any earlier, like, did it have to, do we, like, did we have to go to the county, or is it because of this day and time? Or would this have happened regardless? Cause I think the main issue with, for me, in this is if, sometimes it just feels like the board is always forced to say yes without, like, any pushback. Uh, and that's kind of what worries me, because I feel like trustee Reckler brought up a lot of good points that, um, didn't, that I understand why, um, this was not um, accepted, I forgot the words, but yeah, that's what I wanted to say.
So to your question, yes and. So because it's a living document, it always has the ability to come back to the board. The board has a ultimate responsibility and authority to the workings of the district. One of the things that was committed to was that it would come back as a living document. The point tonight was to be able to retain local control over the budget, right? With that in there, we also heard that it could be brought back with conditions, right? The, uh, Ms. Cleveland said reconsider it, vote it through with conditions, stated conditions on there that would say family engagement has to be revised, et cetera. So that's why it's a yes and. Was it, did it need to happen tonight? Yes, because the budget needed to pass at the same time. Did it need to happen without, um, because it's a living document, it needed to have a level of trust from this board that the cabinet and the departments and the superintendent would do what was asked, which is if we put the conditions on it, then have it come back, we put the calendar on it, we have it on all of our agendas. There were so many system safety nets put in place to where it would not continue to quote-unquote slip through the cracks. It would be something, we would treat it as a living document. That was the commitment from cabinet and the commitment from the superintendent and the commitment from the fact that it's a living document, a commitment for what it is at base, uh, base value. All right, so this is what we're gonna do. After talking with the lawyer, there was an option that said you could discuss, you could discuss, uh, item E one, but you couldn't do anything with it. And the discussion would just be that. We are at nine thirty-one. To discuss something that we don't know if we can move on, I think is futile. That's just my personal opinion. Um, we also have one, two, three, four, four pulled items from the consent. So what I suggest that we do is I suggest we wait until our time is not wasted, but can be used in such a manner that it has action attached to it. So I am asking us, Dr. Hurst, to not discuss E one because according to what we have been told with the limited information that we have, we can't do anything with E one or E three. My suggestion and my push is that we then just move to E four, E five, E six, our discussion item of F one, and then the consent items. And that would probably take us up to ten thirty, we may still have to extend the meeting. Board, I hope that you understand at a, uh, at a grander level why I am choosing just to move past E one and E three, because we cannot do anything with it without information. And we have went past the time of gathering that information now. Um, we are now moving to agenda item.
Sorry, point of order, please.
Go ahead.
Um, so I don't know what the answer to this is, but for E six, it involves money because it's a labor agreement.
Dr. Moses, with E six also have to not be discussed tonight because it does have money attached to it.
Um, E six does not have a financial impact, not a new financial impact because we had a tentative agreement that the board approved for the salary increases for WCCAA in August of twenty twenty-three. Their salary increases were included in last year's budget. I do not believe that, that there are any other issues, um, revolving money um, in the successor agreement with WCCAA. All of the money items were taken care of in August, so this, this one should be okay.
Thank you, Dr. Moses. What about number five? E five?
You know, I'm gonna need to ask some questions about that. It involves tax rates for bonds.
Okay.
Um, I need to figure out how they're figured into this equation. But I, I mean, since you're asking, I am concerned about the, not the ratification of contracts because those are prior year, but I'm concerned about approving contracts for the upcoming years because I'm not sure how to proceed with that, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, Dr. Moses, what I'm hearing you say is the consent items that were pulled, uh, C fourteen, C fifteen, and I'm assuming C seventeen, but also all need to be halted, is that correct? Because they all have finance, finances attached to them?
Any with financial implications for fiscal year twenty-five? The ratification of contracts or us paying contracts that were completed in fiscal year twenty-four. The ratification of contracts, it is okay to approve, but moving forward with contracts for the new school year, we have to ask the questions regarding how we handle that.
So fourteen can still be talked about, ratification of contracts, correct?
Correct.
Fifteen cannot?
Correct.
Seventeen cannot?
I don't believe there's any money involved with eight, with, uh, item number seventeen, but it's not my item.
Uh, Ms. Roberts, can, director Roberts, can AI, or sorry, can C seventeen be talked about, or is there any financial attachment to it?
There's no financial attachment to it.
Okay, so that can be discussed. Dr. Moses, C two, a new job description, that can go for discussion?
Um, if it's a job that did not e- exist in fiscal year twenty-four, I think we should hold off. I think the description is okay, but I don't think that we could post for a job. I bet I'll defer to Dr. Johnson.
Dr. Johnson?
That is correct. We can approve the job description. We will not be, um, able to hire anyone for the position at this moment.
Thank you so much. Okay, so I'm looking again just for a quick review of the agenda. We are make sure that I'm correct with this. We are not going to talk about E one, we are not going to talk about E three, we are not going to talk about E five, but we can do E four and E six, correct? We can do C two and C fourteen and seventeen, correct? I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Free, director Freeze?
Yes, I have Blake Beam with us tonight from KNN Finance. Um, he's telling me there's no fiscal impact on the, uh, setting the, the, um, tax stabilization for the bonds for twenty-four, twenty-five. It has no district impact.
There's no financial impact?
On district funds. It's, it's repayment of the bonds, uh, standing dead.
Okay. Dr. Moses, you in agreement with that, to push, to move forward with that?
Yes, I'll defer to, um, associate superintendent Freeze on that. He, he's the authority in that area.
Okay, all right, so now let's move to, with that understanding, let's move to E four. Dr. Hurst, this is your item, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Resolution number twenty-three, twenty-four dash eighty-six meets the legal requirements necessary prior to any board election. The resolution calls for the holding of a regular governing board member consolidation election on November the fifth, twenty twenty-four. The purpose of the election is to choose successors for districts one, districts two, and districts three. Recommendation is we are asking for approval of this resolution, uh, ordering specifications of the election order. I'll turn it back over to you, ma'am.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
We have no public comment.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion? I'll move resolution two-three-two-four dash eighty-six, resolution ordering specifications of the election order. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments? Seeing none, we are to the vote. Trustee Abdou Kparo?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Paukhar?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you. We are now moving to E five, resolution number two-three-two-four dash eighty-one, requesting the board of supervisors of the county of Contra Costa to establish tax rates for bonds of West Contra Costa Unified School District outstanding during the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, and authorizing necessary actions in connection therewith. Mr. Freeze, director Freeze, this is your item, sir?
Yes, thank you very much. The district is requesting that the county set the twenty-four, twenty-five tax rates at levels providing for the payment of debt service on bonds issued under measure twenty twenty, twenty twenty R as is set forth in the schedules, including an exhibit A to the resolution in which is consistent with the past levy and consistent with the information presented to the voters of the twenty twenty election. A simple majority is required to adopt this resolution. Following adoption, a certified copy of the res- resolution would need to be provided to the county treasurer or confirm the levy during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We ask that you adopt this resolution this evening. If there's any questions, we do have our, uh, representative from KNN with us tonight.
Thank you so much. Do we have public comment?
We have no public comment.
Thank you so very much. Board, do we have any questions? Seeing none, thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'll go ahead and move resolution um, two-three-two-four dash eight-one, requesting the board of supervisors of Contra Costa County to establish tax rates for bonds of the West Contra Costa Unified School District outstanding during the twenty-four, twenty-five, authorizing necessary actions in connection therewith.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments? Seeing none, we'll go straight to the vote. Trustee Abdou Kparo?
Abstain.
Thank you. Trustee Paukhar?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you so much. We are now moving to E E six, board ratification of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-six successor agreement between WCCAA and WCCUSD. Dr. Moses, this is your item.
Uh, this item would have been covered by Mr. Tadasichuk, so we're gonna defer that to Dr. Johnson.
Thank you so much. Dr. Johnson, this is your item.
Yes, thank you, President Smith. Oldson Board, good evening. Uh, the current one-year contract extension of the West Contra Costa Administrators Association and WCCUSD expires on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And the district and WCCAA negotiated the successor contract, which will be in effect for the two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-six school years. The new contract will expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. The contract focuses on updating language to current operational needs and legislation. The agreement was overwhelmingly ratified by the WCCA membership with over ninety percent of the vote.
Thank you so much, Dr. Johnson. Do we have any public comments?
We have no public comment.
Thank you very much. Board, do we have any questions? Go ahead, trustee Phillips.
I'm just to clarify, this successor agreement does not deal with new funding.
It does not.
That was in the last one.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. We are now moving on to the motion. Is there a motion? I'll move board ratification of the twenty twenty-three to the twenty twenty-six successor agreement between WCCAA and WCCUSD. Do we have a second?
Second.
Don't know which one of you said it first.
Mr. Christian, he said it first.
Thank you. Trustee Christian is the second. Do we have any comments? Seeing no comments, we'll go straight to the vote. Trustee Abdou Kparo?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Paukhar?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We are now moving on to our only discussion item tonight, F one, charter annual update. Dr. Moses, this is your item, ma'am.
Thank you. I'd like to invite up to the podium, Ms. Margarita Romo, um, who's our coordinator of business services in charge of charter oversight. And along with her this evening, we have Doug Pelton from EdMetrix, which is a consultant, consultancy firm that supports us with our charter oversight and charter policies. And uh, this is our annual update. Sorry, I'm a little a little disheveled here. Um, this is our annual update on, uh, the charter. So go ahead, Margarita, with your introduction of the item.
Thank you. Good evening, board superintendent and student trustees. Um, my name is Margarita Romo. I am a coordinator in the business services department. And, um, this evening, we're going to go over our annual charter oversight process and annual report. I'd like to start by giving um, a big thank you to Mr. Douglas Pelton of EdMetrix, who's here today. Um, he assisted us this year with our oversight process and annual report and, um, has been a huge help during this process. So thank you, Doug.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Margarita. There's a presentation. We get the presentation up.
Oh, thank, thanks for noticing that.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for your patience. We're gonna pull up that, um, the presentation in just one second. Ms. Margarita.
Thank you so much. Um, we can move on to the next slide. So, uh, tonight's agenda, um, we're gonna cover a little bit about charter history and laws. We'll review, uh, the charters approved by our district, county, and state. The role of the district charter op- office. The role of the district charter office, a brief epicenter update, charter revocation conditions, and an overview of the annual charter school report and site visits for this year. Next slide, please. In nineteen ninety-two, the Charter Schools Act was enacted, allowing charter schools to open and operate throughout the state. The goal was to provide innovation without layers of compliance. Charter schools are tuition-free, public schools that are open to all who want to enroll and cannot discriminate based on disability, national origin, age, gender, or any other factors. They are overseen by school boards of education, county boards of education, and state boards of education. Next slide, please. Under A B fifteen oh five, districts were directed to use the following data to determine charter renewals. We need to look at overall school-wide performance, academic achievement of student groups, state and local indicator data. This allowed districts to track schools by high, medium, and low rankings. Due to the pandemic and suspension of the dashboard in two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one, the performance categories from A B fifteen oh five were placed on hold and reporting on state indicators for renewals was waived for two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one. Next slide, please. Now that we've gone over just a very short history of charter schools, let's take a look at the charter schools authorized by our district. This slide shows the eight charter schools authorized by our district as well as their charter terms. A method Richmond Charter Academy and Leadership Public Schools highlighted in green are up for renewal next fiscal year. Their charter petitions expire at the end of the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five school year. Senate Bill one-one-four extended their terms by an additional year. So we're expecting Richmond Charter Academy's submission in August and leaderships between September and October next school year. Next slide, please. This slide shows the charter schools authorized by the Contra Costa County Office of Education. John Henry High School, shown here, is authorized by the State Board. And their petition is set to expire June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-eight. Assuming they don't relocate, they will need to submit their petition for renewal in the two thousand and twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-eight school year to us per education code. And if denied, they can petition directly to the State Board of Education, but that's not something we need to worry about for a few years. Next slide, please. Next, we will be talking a bit about the role of the district charter office. As a charter authorizer, we have many oversight responsibilities. One of those is to ensure the charter school is living up to and meeting its accountability goals as outlined in their charter petition and M O U. We must also review their financial condition by reviewing their interim financial reports, business practices, and internal controls, among other things. Strong oversight is essential for student performance, fiscal accountability, and legal compliance. For example, this week, I'm working on reviewing all of our charter's budgets for the two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five year. They're due to the County Office of Education by July first. Next slide, please. These are the legal criteria that describe charter school oversight. One of the items on this list is visiting each charter school annually. And brief descriptions of charter school visits may be found in the annual report that is attached to this agenda item. I'll be talking about the visits briefly later in my presentation. Next slide, please. This slide outlines the various departments within our district that are involved in charter school oversight. The charter office is in business services and is the point contact for all charter schools. So that would be me. I am the point contact for all the schools within our district. We complete the financial oversight, compliance, data collection, and collaboration with other departments to ensure that we're providing adequate oversight. Next slide, please. I wanted to provide just a very brief update on epicenter. EdMetrix has been assisting us with the implementation of epicenter. Epicenter is a software program designed to assist charter school authorizers with annual oversight. This is anticipated to cost around twelve thousand dollars next fiscal year. It's about a thousand five hundred per school times eight schools. The charter schools submit their documents using this portal, and the documents are then routed to the appropriate people within our district for review. Epicenter is used by the County Office of Education as well as other charter authorizers, such as Oakland Unified. So many of our charter schools are already familiar with the platform. Internal staff trainings took place in May. And this week, we had trainings with some charter schools, and we have more scheduled for next week. Next slide, please. I wanted to briefly look at some of our board policies. Board policy zero-four-two-zero-point-four-two goes over renewal factors for charter schools. Here are a few criteria that we must look at when considering renewing a charter. For example, their financial condition and management and the soundness of their education program. Next slide, please. Some of this information is continued on this slide. Next slide, please. In the event that we decide to deny a charter school, we have to provide the charter school with at least thirty days' notice of any violations, alleged violations, and provide reasonable opportunity for the charter school to cure the violation. Next slide, please. Now that we've gone over the role of the charter office, epicenter, and charter revocation conditions, we'll be talking a little bit about our charter site visits from the twenty-three, twenty-four year, and we'll be digging into the twenty-two, twenty-three charter school data from Data Quest. Next slide, please. This report provides information on students served, ethnicities, and subgroups, plus shows the California Department of Education's dashboard performance data. Please note that this report focuses on school performance data and enrollment from the twenty-two, twenty-three academic year. There may be outstanding issues not covered in this general review, and this report does not make recommendations on renewals or possible specific concerns. The board will be updated if any significant developments or information arise with a specified charter school. Next slide, please. I wanted to take a moment also just to quickly touch on our site visits. On this slide, we have the site visit team. This year, we conducted one site visit in December of two thousand and twenty-three. The rest were completed in April and May. The site visit team consisted of individuals on this slide. We had President Smith Folds and Dr. Moses attend the site visit for A Method Richmond Charter Academy that is up for renewal next year. We also had EdMetrix and several leaders from Education Services in attendance, and I'd like to thank them for attending and contributing their expertise and insights to our annual oversight process. I also would like to thank the charter school leaders for welcoming our team on their campuses and engaging with us during this process. It was a sincere pleasure being able to work with everyone involved. Next slide, please. Our site visits, for the most part, followed this structure. We started our visits with an interview with site leadership, followed by interviews with parents, students, and teachers. Then we observed a few classrooms and completed the site visit with a debrief with site leadership. Before each visit, we reviewed ethnicities and subgroups reports from Data Quest and prepared questions in advance of the visit. Our conversations with site leadership focused on areas for growth or success based on the data reviewed and probed leadership for strategies to increase student learning.
Final order?
What's your point, sir?
I'm sorry, ma'am. I'd like to make a motion to extend the meeting.
Can you give me a time, sir?
Ten forty-five.
Ten forty-five, and you want to finish this presentation and take up the consent items? Is that correct? Or go just until ten forty-five, whatever we can get done?
Yes, ma'am. I would like to just end at ten forty-five. I hope we got comments.
Okay. So is there a second to that?
Reckler will second.
Thank you. Let's go to the vote. Trustee Abdu Kaparo.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Palcar.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian.
Yes.
And I'm a left, I'm a yes. We'll go until ten forty-five. We'll see how far we get. All right, thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt. Go ahead, please, ma'am.
I was just about to wrap up this slide with during our classroom observations, we also looked for evidence of learning. And to kind of connect back to the conversations we had with site leadership before conducting the classroom observations. More information about the visits can be found in our annual report. Next slide, please. The rest of our presentation is looking at data from the dashboard. And on this slide, we have subgroups. In order to evaluate the degree to which a charter school mirrors the district, it's helpful to review subgroup enrollment and ethnic makeup of each school. On the left, we have subgroups, and on the top, we have the charter schools, the district, and the state. Subgroups include students who have greater challenges stemming from influences that are proven to impact education. For example, if we look at socioeconomically disadvantaged students on the bottom row, we can see that all of our charter schools enroll a larger percentage of socioeconomically disadvantaged students compared to our district and the state. Additionally, Voices enrolls the largest percentage of English learners. Next slide, please. Next, we have ethnicity percentages of the charter schools, district, and state. Charter schools are intended to mirror the demographics of their wider district or to serve greater percentages of students in need. Systematic racism and the resulting education gap between ethnicities may impact educational attainment. So this is something that we can look at here to compare the differences. From this table, we can see that we enroll twelve percent African-American students, and the state enrolls four-point-nine percent. Of the charter schools, R C P has the largest percentage at fifteen percent, and Voices has the lowest at point-three percent. Next slide, please. We're now going to look at ethnicity at district charter and traditional public schools. Looking at this chart, we can see that the top four ethnicities served include Hispanic and Latinx, followed by African-American, then Asian and white. Looking at African-American students, we can see that the district enrolls African-American students at a higher rate than charter schools. The opposite is true for Hispanic students. As a reminder, this is data from twenty-two, twenty-three, and shows enrollment for our eight charter schools. It doesn't include enrollment for charter schools authorized by the county or state. Next slide. Here we have our dashboard local indicators. The data on this slide is self-reported, and as you can see, for the categories on the left, such as teacher instructional materials, facilities, parent and family engagement. All of our charter schools, as well as our district, reported that we met those indicators. Next slide. Now, looking at the dashboard for all students, the first two columns show chronic absenteeism and suspensions, and would ideally be very low, would indicate very low or low. The remaining columns would ideally indicate high or very high. For example, having low chronic absenteeism and a high graduation rate, those would be positive things. All schools, except Summit Tama Pius, have made improvements in the chronic absenteeism rating with L P S not showing a rating. Next slide, please. Next, we have the dashboard English Language Arts. This table reviews student performance for E L A and for E L A. Results are disaggregated in the table below, placing subgroups served in each charter school with enrollment figures greater than ten students into categories from very low to very high. No student groups mean there were too few students to report. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. These are just a continuation of the same dashboard. We'll move on to the next slide. Thank you. Now we have the dashboard for math, and it works similarly to the dashboard for E L A. Results are disaggregated in this table, placing subgroups served in each charter school with enrollment figures. And once again, no student groups mean there were too few students to report. Next slide. This is a continuation of the previous slide, and we'll move on to the next one, which is also a continuation. Next slide, please. Thank you. Okay, so moving on to schools without accessible data for top district ethnicities. I just wanted to point out from this slide that the district may request this data from each charter school. The groups listed on the right may not be as vigorously served as other groups. So that's what this table tells us. Next slide, please. This is our last slide. And it goes over English learner performance indicators. On the left, we have categories showing how students are progressing, and on the top, we have our schools. So you can see on the first row, English learners who progressed at least one E L P I level and so forth. So looking at this chart, we can see that the school with the greatest progression was Summit Tama Pius at fifty-eight-point-seven percent. Next slide, please. This concludes my presentation. Thank you all for listening.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, we have one public comment. Helen Burks, please unmute yourself.
Hello. My name is Helen Burks, and I'm the principal at King Elementary School. As I noted these charter results, the main thing going through my head had to do with the hiring timeline of schools versus district schools. At King, we were very excited to have some positions posted this evening. We have people ready to apply who will be taking other positions now that our S P S A and others are being essentially held hostage. So as I look at these charter results, one of the glaring things is that it's not an equal playing field to get these results. It shows up in the demographic data, and it shows up majorly in the hiring timelines and the hiring practices that are permitted in these different settings. So I wanted to voice that as one administrator out of many who are heartbroken right now with the actions that have been taken tonight and the impact that it will have on our students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Board, we are going to do three questions and two-minute comments. Are there questions? Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you so much for the presentation, so can you tell us a little bit, um, you know, anecdotally, what did you find on your visits? Um, you know, practices, procedures, what parents said, what administrators said, what people liked, what people wanted to snatch away and adopt here, what they thought wasn't the best practice, a- all of those kinds of things. And it it doesn't have to be you, it could be other people who went as well, thank you.
I can start. If you'd like me to start. Uh, so, um, I had the pleasure of, uh, attending the vision visit for Richmond Charter Academy. And I think what I noticed most of all is, um, that the trust in the staff and the camaraderie and collegiality, they seem to be really working as a team and had the support of administration. Um, in terms of the instructional program, I saw very similar practices to what I see in our schools. I think that, um, in comparison to the lessons that I saw, um, they look just like what I would see in one of our schools. The difference was the climate and the the staff in their stakeholder. Uh-oh, the staff in their stakeholder group spoke highly of feeling supported by upper management. Do you have anything to add, Margarita, Ms. Romo?
Uh, yes, um, I would, um, I think you hit a lot of, a lot of what we saw at the charter schools. I, uh, I was able to attend all of them this year, um, and from my point of view, I think the charter schools have, many of them have done a very good job of cultivating a very strong culture on their campuses. And, um, there's heavy, have a lot of, uh, heavy parent involvement. Um, students feel very connected to the school. I think all of them reported that they have, one of the questions we ask is, is there somebody at at your school that you feel safe talking to or going to if you need support? And, uh, I believe all of the students said that they did feel that they had a trusted adult at the at the school that they could talk to. So, um, I think that there there was just a very strong sense of community, um, overall. Um, and parents shared that they felt that, a lot of them shared that they felt that they got very frequent communications from their school, a lot of them use Parents Square just like we do. Um, so they felt that they were very involved and, um, informed about what was going on. Um, Mr. Pelton also joined on the visits, would you like to add anything? Okay.
And so for the people who want, how do you think we can snatch some of that back and cultivate more of that in the WCC USD?
Is is that question for me?
Uh, whoever went on a visit and had any feedback on that?
Yeah, I can start, I think that, um, having time, I think we've done a great job in our district of, uh, bit working hard towards building those, but I think we have a ways to go in terms of relationship building. Um, I also believe that our students, if you were to pull them, would, many of them or most of them would say they have a trusted adult. But I think that, um, their branding is just different from the way in which we brand our schools. Uh, they're a much tighter knit, uh, community and they're, the way in which they market their schools, uh, is just different from the way in which we market, and I think that, um, we need to lift up some of the things that we're doing great so that we can have the same level of marketability. Because I do believe in looking at, um, both of the experiences of the students and the experiences of the staff, we have a lot to offer, just like charters, um, are offering things, but I think that, um, our community doesn't hear about that enough. So I would say branding is one area in which I think, uh, we need to, um, really do more of that and also just working together and showing our community that we are united in the efforts to educate their kids. Anything to add, Ms. Romo?
I, um, I don't think so, I I don't have experience of having worked at a school, and so is, that's a hard hard question for me to answer, so thank you for for jumping in.
And then finally, uh, for the charters under WCC USD authorization, uh, do any of the charters have qualified or negative budgets or are financially unstable, however they, uh, classify that or, you know, I don't even know if they have the same procedure, honestly. And if so, which ones and what, uh, what do you do about that?
They do have to, uh, indicate where they fall, um, whether their, uh, budget is qualified or, um, the other categories, um, for which the 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 categories are escaping me right now, but they do have to report that to us. Um, I am in the process of reviewing them and so for their next year's budgets, I can't answer that yet. Um, but I could get back to you if you'd like. Um,
But you can answer for what the work you've been doing now.
Pardon me?
Yeah, it doesn't have to be for next year, it could be for last year, I mean, we're talking about a years back in data.
Yeah, for last year, um, I, there weren't any, um, negative budgets or qualified budgets, all the budgets were fine. Um, I'm currently looking at next year's budgets, which is, um, why I, um, I was talking about next year, but for this past year, I didn't see any issues that I can think of right now.
Okay, thank you.
Board, any other questions? I have a question, the slide that you showed that had the charter school name on one side and then it had, um, ethnic breakdown of students on the other side, and you said something to the effect of, these are the students who are not being, I don't know what the word was, Ms. Romo, but-
May not be served as vigorously.
May not be served as vigorously, can you dive into what that means for me, please?
I'm pulling up the slide just a second.
Okay.
While she pulls that up, I think I can start with an answer. Um, what we saw were the subgroups where the schools have smaller percentages. And what that means is they are not required to report data on those subgroups because their subset is so small. Um, I'm not sure that that we want to name that as students not being served well, but what we might want to name that as, we cannot tell the levels of, level of service for those students because the data doesn't exist. Um, I'm not sure if Margarita or or Doug can speak to whether that is the only time we don't have data. I know the CDE won't record data if you don't have more than ten students in a subgroup. So if there's less than ten students, we just cannot measure what's happening with the subgroup. However, I think I did hear, uh, Ms. Romo say that we could request the data from the charter, but it doesn't appear formally. Did, do you have anything to ask, Ms. Romo?
No. Thank you so much, so the district, my second question, so the district could request data, local, local data or data when they took the fill-in-the-blank state test. And then we could use that data to deep dive, to have conversations, to, could we use that data to, uh, request, require movement from the charter school with this group of students? What could we use that data for, once we, if we choose to request it, what do we then use it for?
Well, I think that, you know, anytime you're using single test data, it's one snapshot. And so if you're looking at just one data point, it it's just going to give you a snapshot of a small sample. I think that if we wanted to deep dive and find out how those small subgroups are doing, we would need to ask for multiple sources of data over time because it wouldn't be possible to make a determination with one snapshot with such a small group.
Thank you so very much. Board, are there any other questions? Seeing no questions, thank you so very much for this item. Uh, we absolutely can, let me see where we are, yep. Are there, can we get two minutes on the clock? Trustee Reckler, you have comments? Okay, wait for the clock, please. Go ahead, trustee Reckler.
Thanks so much, so thank you for the presentation. And I want the board to know that I did submit a lot of just micro details about the presentation and ways to strengthen it and ways to look at the data maybe a little differently or provide some different data. And so I hope that those will be looked at and taken into account because I think it will just tighten up and kind of give a a better picture of how schools are doing, so I just hope that is, uh, you know, you take a look at that. And then again, as I say every year, I think it's really important that you guys follow four seven six oh seventy-one, which is at the conclusion of the year, immediately preceding the final year of the charter school's term, the charter school authorizer may request and and the department shall provide cumulative enrollment data for that school. And you can kind of see a stability rate and like who's leaving and why, and then you can track like who begins and who ends, and I think that's a really important metric about how these schools are retaining students. And so once again, I've said this every year that this presentation comes up and please write to the S, to the CDE and ask for that information and keep it on file so that you know, um, you know about attrition, thank you so much.
Any other comments? You still have thirty-six seconds?
I'm sorry, yeah, I have one more thing, which is, um, this no performance data, so like if you go to the dashboard and you see no performance data and you actually click on no performance data, sometimes there is data in there, so, you know, uh, don't, uh, don't, uh, take that at face value and click into it, I mean, I clicked into a few of these and there is data in there, so I think everybody should be doing that, thank you so much.
Any other comments? I have a comment, I'll wait for the clock. Thank you so much for the, uh, presentation, thank you, Ms. Romo, for all the work that you did, thank you, Dr. Moses, for all the work that you did, and I don't know where Doug went, but, oh, wait, there is, thank you so much for all the work you did. Um, going to visit these charter schools gives you an insight into what's happening and what they say is happening, right? So I think to your point, having a deeper dive into data, not just one data point, but multiple data points will ensure that these students that are there, because they are our students, these students that are there are being served and being served to the best of their ability. If they are not knocking it out of the ballpark, it's one of the questions that you kind of say, well, why? Well, why this option and not this other option? So I think, um, continuing to have these conversations, continuing to do the deep dives, continuing to do the work, because we are all public school servers, we are all public school educators, and we want to be able to serve all of our students in their homes, their home local public schools, so I think we continue to dive deep. It's not, um, telling parents what to do, but it's giving them an equal option. So I think that's where we can go from here, thank you so much again for all your work on this, and we look forward to this coming back a lot, so we can have, uh, deeper conversations about this, especially at the absenteeism and we want to talk about suspensions and we need to talk about, um, again, meeting those academic goals or not meeting those academic goals. Dr. Hurst, we are on this anti-racist journey, all of us, all of our students are covered under that, so we need to do real interrogation around all of the sites that serve our schools, including charter. I am complete, thank you very much. We are now moving to consent items, we are going to consent item C two. Trustee Reckler, you pulled this one, go ahead.
Thank you, apologies for the delay. So on this one, um, you know, I, uh, I just wanted to say that, uh, I don't really have, I don't really have anything about this job description, I mean, I'm I'm kind of neutral on it, except for a couple of things. It's a central office position, like an executive director, I mean, it's going to support schools, but it is a central office position and it's funded out of Title One. And those are my concerns about this. So when we have schools that are screaming for Title One, um, and it's coming out of a central Title One, uh, bucket, I have concern about that. So those are my concerns and I'm d- divided about approving the position, but then figuring out what to do with the hire when that comes up, so just wanted to be transparent about where my brain is on that and, uh, that's all I have, thank you.
Go ahead, Dr. Moses.
I just wanted to clarify, I I didn't read deeply through the d- description, I think they made mention of monitoring Title One programs, but the funding is not coming from Title One. It's actually coming from educator effectiveness for this position because the goal is to improve uh, intervention systems for our our subgroups with need. So I just wanted to be clear that the funding is not Title One, it's educator effectiveness.
Trustee Reckler, you have anything else?
Okay, thank you for that. Yeah, it was reported to me that it was paid for out of Title One funds, so you're sure that it's educator effectiveness?
I'm positive, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Would anyone like to move new job description administrator on special assignment? I'll move it. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, any comments? Seeing no comments, let's go straight to the vote. Trustee Abdu Kaparo.
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Palcar.
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Phillips.
Absolutely.
Thank you, trustee Reckler.
Yes.
Trustee Christian.
Yes.
And I'm a yes, thank you very much, we're now moving to item C fourteen, the ratification of contracts, trustee Reckler, you pulled this item?
Yes, so the first question is, for the last few board meetings, there has been a ratification of contracts and then there's been contracts. So I'm wondering if I could understand the difference between both of those categories because in this week's board meeting, it seems like, uh, pretty much everything is the same.
She mean that the contracts that are coming forward this week are the same as the contracts that came forward two weeks ago?
No, 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 that in these two categories, um, fourteen and fifteen, the same con, almost all the same contracts, it's repeated.
So I think that's an error and I'll have to look into that. Um, the ratification contracts are the ones that I have copies of today and I also have one procurement contract, but I don't have anything under the ongoing contracts and the reason, I mean, future contracts and the reason for that is we want to bring you an evaluation of our vendors prior to bringing any new contracts forward to you. So there might have been a double posting, but the only thing that, um, we're asking for approval for today is the ratification of these pro- projects, I'm sorry, contracts, uh, two of which are happening right now for summer school and the others are services that have already been completed, which is why they're ratifying instead of approving.
Okay, okay, so maybe that's the, okay, maybe that's what's going on, okay. Um, all right, then, uh, once again, there are many contracts that are passed that, um, uh, are, uh, are coming to the board late. And then I was wondering if I could, uh, understand a little bit about the Hidden Genius Project. So wonderful program, but it seems absolutely really expensive. So it's ninety thousand dollars for just the summer when you have BACR. So it's ninety thousand dollars for just the summer when you have BACR, uh, you know, at, uh, oh, I'm sorry, what was it? East Bay Center of the Performing Arts. And, and even if you quadrupled eBay's East Bay Center for the Performing Arts, it would come out to maybe fifty-five or sixty thousand dollars. And this is a ninety thousand dollar contract. So I wanted, um, just to, uh, highlight the expense of it. And also, do you have a hundred kids in the Stige Summer Program? And if not, like, does this get paraded in any way?
Yes, all great questions. So, um, the level of service is different. What, what we were funding here is ten classrooms for a five-week program, so that the cost was nine thousand per classroom. And we were keeping classrooms small on purpose, because the intention of the Stige Summer Program is to give those students a robust attention to, as for replacement instruction and enrichment. Um, we do not have a hundred students in the program. We're hovering at about fifty. I did a walkthrough with the program today and we'll be talking with the vendor about an adjustment for the contract, because we have less students. Instead of having ten classrooms, they have five. So I anticipate that we won't be paying out the full amount of this contract. Every contract that we create is for projected service, but as the service needs change, so does the contract amount.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's all I have.
When you're talking about the Stige Program, Dr. Moses, is this what we were, uh, discussing with, um, academic recovery?
Yes, absolutely. And what we've done is we've contracted with Sylvan Learning Center in order to provide, um, targeted intervention in small groups for the students at Stige. So there's a contract for that. I just also wanted to point out the, that we're offering also arts enrichment through the East Bay Center. But for the East Bay Center for Performing Arts, they're only doing three classes a day, whereas Hidden Genius is expected to do ten classes a day. So that's the difference in the contract. And we have a contract with Sylvan to provide all of the academic enrichment. And we have our own staff, uh, hired as well to provide the personalization and the connection and relationship with our students.
Will they give us, um, end of summer data? Like this is where the child was and then after five weeks or six weeks or however long the program lasts, this is now where we've moved the child in certain areas, whether that's, I don't know, Sylvan, whether they're doing language arts or math or whatever. We will get that information though?
Yes, Sylvan does a pre-test in order to place all of their students, uh, for the instructional program. And at the end of the five weeks, they'll do a post-test and they will make that data available to us. Uh, Hidden Genius is used in scratch as well as some, um, hands-on, uh, models for the students. I'm not sure how they're collecting data, but I will circle back and ask. And the students will have a culminating performance for dance and, and African drumming, uh, through the East Bay Center for Performing Arts, so.
Thank you so very much.
You're welcome.
Board, is there a motion to move the ratification, C14, the ratification of contracts?
So I'll go ahead and move that, but I'd like, um, contracts that don't meet the specified student number by, you know, ten percent do get renegotiated.
Okay, so hold on. That was your comment, but you wanna, you did the motion?
That's a motion. The motion is that we ratified the contracts, but.
That's attached to the motion?
Right, but programs that, you know, are ten percent, you know, uh, are renegotiated. Thank you.
Is there a second to that motion, Mr. Phillips?
And accept contracts that have to do with next year's funding?
I didn't see. I didn't see contracts that were for next year's funding. I saw stuff that was, uh, from this past school year that hasn't, uh, that never came to the board and I saw some summer programs.
So hold on, let's let Dr. Moses clarify. Dr. Moses, go ahead.
Yeah, so we are not discussing, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-five programs. These are all programs that are happening now. Um, we are on a bit of a slippery slope, because the Stige Program is, it does have two and a half weeks of the new fiscal year. Uh, so I'll need to discuss that with the, the county office, but it's already happening and being, and haven't been actively paid for, so we cannot not pay them for their service for the last two weeks of the program. But I also just wanted to stipulate that when we, when we negotiate a contract and we bring it forth to you for approval, we're asking for your approval to pay up to that amount. Every vendor must submit an invoice and the invoice must outline level of service, time of service, cost of service. And so in all of our contracts, we only pay out for what we've received from the vendor. And if the contract isn't fully expended, meaning, for example, this one will be less than what we expected, we then disencumber the remaining amount on the PO and it goes back into the budget. So there's a process for ensuring that, uh, our vendors are giving us a fair price and we're not just paying out an agreed-upon amount. We're paying as we go based upon an invoice system.
Thank you very much. Trustee Reckler, can you restate your motion, please?
All right, what if I restated this way? That the contracts are approved, but the process by which, uh, you know, contracts are checked and not overpaid based on, you know, number of students enrolled, um, is adhered to. How's that?
Is there a second to that motion?
Uh, can I just ask a question real quick?
Absolutely.
Ma'am, is that motion okay with you? Okay, I second that motion.
Are there any comments? Can we put two minutes on the clock, please? I have a comment. Any other comments? No. My comment around contracts is, Dr. Moses, I think that you are doing a really fantastic job, as well as the business office is doing a really fantastic job. The amount of transparency that's coming around the contracts is unprecedented almost in this district. I heard you say that you are bringing back the buffet of contracts that we are gonna talk about and see as a board to see if they met their administrative regulations. Not sure if that's ever been done before, but it certainly needed to be. So when we are looking at those contracts, we are making sure that if they said, because we're paying them. So if they said they're gonna decrease absenteeism by ten percent, then they're doing it. If they're not doing it, then we have the right and I think the obligation to say you no longer can work in the district, because you are not meeting the standard that you set and that we required. So I wanna say once again publicly and out loud, thank you. I know that contracts are constantly being pulled and you are constantly able to answer to that call. This is why we do it. The why is so super important, because it builds trust. So I appreciate your generosity of spirit every two weeks when it comes to this and also appreciate your transparency around contracts. And I appreciate you setting a better standard in the district from moving forward with this is how we do our contracts. This is how we do our buffet. And to ensure that if we are paying for a program, that the program is working for the students. So thank you for that. I just wanna let you know that it's appreciated and it's seen. So thank you. Okay. I am complete. Let's go to the vote. We are at Trustee Abdou Kiparov. Your vote, ma'am?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Palpar, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler, your vote?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. We are now moving to consent item number seventeen. Ms. Roberts, I believe this is your item. Director Roberts, the use of artificial intelligence, AI board policy.
Yeah, I, I pulled it.
I'm so sorry, Ms. Roberts. Hold on a minute. Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
So I would like to have this item tabled until the first meeting in August. It's not because I don't think an AI policy is important. I actually think it's really important, but we have not adhered to the board's, uh, bylaws and policies in regard to, um, uh, reviewing policies. And I sent all the board members a note, but in, uh, summary, uh, board policy, sorry about this. It's late, I'm losing it.
Second.
Board Policy nine three one zero does require two readings. Uh, it does not consider a committee meeting to be a board meeting. The board can make other policies. And so I'd, you know, I'd like to suggest something else when this comes back, but it really should not, for the first reading been put, be put into consent. It didn't, it doesn't allow the rest of the board to weigh in on the policy, discuss it and propose any changes. So I'd like it to come back as a discussion item. Thank you. I think that was seconded.
It was.
Any other comments? Any other questions? I have a comment. The Governance Committee looked at this policy. We had Ms. Logan come, the Director Logan come, and talk with the governing committee about this. We then went and to ensure that we are following the law, we went and had it, the process reviewed by the lawyer. Is this following board process? The answer, and Dr. Hurst, please push back on this. The answer was, yes. It, the spirit of it may not have been followed, but you are following the law to be able to have it in committee and then have it come back. Because it's pulled, you can also have the questions and a discussion and hear from the staff, which is all the things that would happen in a first reading as well. Am I off point or am I correct?
That's exactly what Howard was saying, the spirit of it.
Okay. You made a motion to have it tabled. It was, Trustee Reckler, you made a motion to have it tabled. Trustee Phillips, you second that motion. I would like to put a second motion on the floor. I would like us to vote on the item, the use of the artificial intelligence board policy. With that voting on, we will go to questions and comments and then we would take a vote. My motion is for us to keep it on this agenda and to go through the process of questions, comments and a vote. That's my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, with the second, we are now going to vote on my motion first and then we vote on, yes, sir.
Ma'am, I think we were actually, so, once, once the motion to table was made, we were really supposed to go straight to the, to the vote.
I believe that a second motion can always be put on the floor. Is that not accurate?
There was like a lot of discussion when we should have actually just been voting, but you're chairing, so you do, we will.
All right, we'll course correct that next time. Let's go to the vote for my motion, which was to continue the process as is, to have it on the agenda. Do the questions, do the comments, do the vote. That's what we're voting on. Student Trustee Abdou Kiparov, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Palpar, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips, your vote?
No.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler, your vote?
No.
Thank you. Trustee Christian, your vote?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. This is stalemate. What do we do? It fails? All right, let's go to the original. Go ahead, sir.
I, I actually think the item's done, because your motion was for us to vote on it tonight and that failed. I think that just negated the first motion to table. I think we're done.
With that, so, but here's the hitch in the giddy up. Does it move to, Dr. Hurst, does it move to next agenda or what happens with the motion? Because it failed to talk about it tonight, but we're not gonna vote to table it. It would just not actually roll to the next agenda under consent, same way? Because we didn't vote to table it and move. You can get clarification? All right.
So this will be very clear, um, so everyone hears me. I think I can get clarification based on what Trustee Reckler said and based on what you said as well.
Okay, so I guess the question would be that it failed to discuss it tonight. We did not vote on moving it or tabling it. So the question is, where does it come again? Go ahead, Trustee Phillips.
Ma'am, I think you're well within your right to just put it on the next agenda.
Great, I'll take that right. Put it on the next agenda under consent and if it gets pulled, we'll do this whole thing again. All right, we are now moving to, we are now moving to agenda item G, comments from the Board of Education. We only have four minutes and, yes, ma'am. Go ahead. Oh, you just wanted to make a comment. Okay. We have four minutes and we have two, four, six, eight. We have too many minutes, so we need to go down to a minute. Yes, sir.
I just wanted to make a comment.
You wanna make a comment too? We're gonna go down to minute comments, one minute, two minute, three minute, four, and maybe the student trustees. Hit it. Go ahead, sir. You can go first.
So I just wanted to clarify why I voted no on the LCAP item. Um, first, the comments, uh, from the public concerned me. Um, the concern wasn't necessarily that staff didn't do what they said. But it is, it was more so that it sounded like they were not actually heard. Um, and that is an issue and a concern for me. But the other reason that I voted no, uh, to be frank, is I have been asking for a balanced budget for eight years. I've been voting no on budgets for eight years. And I saw this as an opportunity to get outside help from the county to get a balanced budget. And that's why I voted no.
Thank you very much. We'll go to Trustee Reckler. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I just wanna be clear that I will not be held hostage. I have a fiscal and accountability responsibility and I will perform it. And I have been way too nice in the past, so I just wanna make sure that that is clear. I will not be at the July seventeenth meeting, which is why I want that policy to come back in August. I will also not be at the extended learning graduation. Please do not schedule any superintendent reviews or evaluations, uh, until July twenty-ninth or after. And the El Srito High School waitlist is a real problem. Um, if the school has capacity, hire teachers and let the students in. Otherwise, they will leave the district. And we are not in a position to have any additional drops in enrollment or ADA. Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments? Go ahead, Trustee Christian. Wait for the clock. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, um, no, just to, you know, close out tonight, you know, there's basically, you know, with the LCAP, I wanna make sure equity is, I mean, across the board and making sure that, you know, things are done accordingly. And then many people mentioned many comments about the LCAP. And so, um, so it, things has to be done, you know, done right in order for things to move forward. So, um, and just to say, you know, you know, through all these challenges, things that we've been through, and as we close this session out tonight, you know, um, you, you know, we looking towards the fall. So, but that's it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. If we could put one minute on the clock. Student trustees, you have something to say? Oh, look at both of you. Well, we are gonna run out of time. So, um, I, it is ten forty-five. We actually ran out of time, which is a hot mess warmed over twice. I absolutely apologize for that. I don't get to talk either. It's one of those things and we all know I have a nice snappy comeback. But we can't say it, because I have to adjourn, because that is according to the bylaws. So I would suggest that you send it in an email and we can post it, or you put it on your social media, which is what I'm gonna do. Okay, we are now adjourned. It is ten forty-five. Our next meeting is July seventeenth at Dejon Middle School. Is that accurate? Yes, it is. All right. Thank you very much. We're adjourned. Say it again?